Good morning. And welcome to our monthly work session, March 19th, 2024. Today, we will be discussing workforce housing, property insurance renewal, and policy updates and revisions. Superintendent Connor, would you like to introduce our first guest?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the board previously, I would say about four months ago, directed me to do some research and exploration around workforce housing. We know we've been using a lot of terminology lately. We know this is a concern amongst many of our constituents, especially in the Sarasota County region where house pricing has gotten pretty astronomical. And we know that how we can afford those houses, and especially with our workforce's educators, making sure that they're well taken care of. So, in terms of that exploration, there has been some previous efforts done with the district. And I know Mr. Dumas, our chief operating officer, is going to share a little bit of our previous efforts around this topic. And then talk today with two organizations, Neil Communities and One Stop Housing, around some potential options. This is an exploratory session, so there's no specific recommendations. This is just for us to learn more about the current state of housing in Sarasota County, what potential options there could be. Obviously, there would be some extensive work done with our staff in terms of determining what the needs are, and if we decide to potentially move forward with any particular options in this particular realm, that we will do our due diligence to work with our staff to understand what their specific needs are and how we can help meet their needs. So, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Dumas to talk a little bit about our previous efforts and then present our new guest. Thank you.
Okay, well, good morning, everybody. Thank you, Superintendent Connor, for allowing us to have this conversation this morning. And we structured this as really a conversation, right? And so, what we thought we'd do is kind of just give you some brief history of what we've done as a team over the past few years in terms of conversations about workforce housing, and then really turn it over to the experts. And we've got three individual presentations to show you today where you can really dig in with people who know a lot more about housing and affordable housing in Sarasota County than I do. And then just allow you some time to ask them questions, and then just have some conversation amongst yourselves, and hopefully give us some direction in terms of what you'd like to see in the district. So, with that, we'll show you the brief presentation this morning. So, this is kind of the goals for today, is again, just give you an overview of our previous efforts in the district, discuss the basis for the conversation today, provide options for partnerships potentially moving forward, if that's something you'd like to pursue, and then again, just provide time for you guys as a board to dialogue and give some general direction to staff. So, the conversation began actually several years ago, really structured around what could we do as potentially a recruitment tool to bring high-quality teachers, high-quality staff into the district as it became tougher and tougher to recruit. This was one of the options on the table of how could we support workforce housing, and that become part of our package for the HR team. And so, we had several conversations, and we really kind of formed an informal work group that consisted of really community partners. We had county staff, we had somebody from the sheriff's department there. Although the hospital staff wasn't there, they were part of the conversation at one time, too. It was really bringing people together at the table who had a stake in workforce housing, because not only the school district struggles with where are people who work in the service industry going to stay, we kind of all struggle with that, whether you're a cop or you're a firefighter, we all kind of have the same problem in Sarasota County. So, we really came together as a team and just had conversations and kind of explored opportunities. And really, at that particular time, one of the things we kept running into is who's going to bring the resources to the table, right? And so, you know, as part of all these organizations together, the school district always had potentially some property or some things, or what that conversation might look like in terms of things we brought to the table to be partners. But those other community partners were kind of struggling with what they could bring to the table. And so, I think that's kind of where we struggled with that team getting together, is kind of what were next steps, who's going to bring what to the table. And so, those conversations kind of would transition to superintendents, those kind of stopped for a little while, and we're back kind of talking about that again. So, as a basis for the conversation today, you know, there are a lot of options for us, and we've discussed a lot of options in the past, everything from a few houses on, say, like the Alta Vista campus, where we did some infill housing there, to allow teachers to go to Alta Vista and Sarasota High, to something potentially on the Garden campus as we rebuild, to the conversation about Indian Hills, which is some vacant property we've owned for years, because that's a big piece of vacant property. And that was also kind of on the conversation about, okay, what would that look like if we wanted to help kind of fund or sponsor a larger project? So, as a basis for the conversation today and for the presentations that you're going to see, I was trying to create, or we were trying to create, kind of an apples-for-apples comparison where you could kind of see different business models. And we thought the best way to do that is provide kind of a structure for at least a conversation today. So, we are using our Indian Hills Boulevard property as the base for the conversation today that no way limits us at all. It's just a jump start for the conversation, so I wanted to kind of point that out. It is, however, really the only large piece of vacant property the district currently owns that we don't have a school planned in the future for, right? We have other properties, but typically, they're all set for schools in growth. This is the one that's kind of been there for a while. We have not done anything with it in recent years, although it was housed a triad south at one particular point. There were some other little programs there in portables, but never really a full school. It is comprised of two different parcels, which we'll show you, about 40 total acres. We had it appraised in 2022, our planning department had it appraised actually in 2022 as these conversations were starting to heat up, just so we knew what the value of the property was, and it appraised at that time for about $6.5 million. The reason we really never used it for a school is because it's about 1.3 miles to Garden and about three miles to Venice Middle. So, the location in terms of where it is in the city of Venice, or excuse me, in Venice, is not really conducive to putting another school site there. And then, if we do want to move forward with this property, there is an issue with property title. When the property got conveyed to the school district, it really is part of the property title, it states it can only be a school site. So, if we decide to move in a direction where we're going to do something different, that'll have to be unwound, and so that'll have to be part of the conversations as we move forward. So, just wanted to make sure you were kind of familiar with the property we're talking about today. And this is, thanks to the planning department, this is an aerial view of where we kind of are. The two parcels outlined in yellow there are the two parcels that make up the 40 acres. The red arrow to the left is Garden Elementary, and the right arrow to the right, excuse me, the red arrow to the right is Venice Middle, so you can kind of see the proximity. And that center road, that road right above the two arrows, running down, left to right on the screen. And drilling down into the properties, you can see the parcel to the left is the one that was cleared. You can see the parking lot that we used to use and the portable, we used to sit on that lawn area there. And then, the parcel to the right has been untouched and is kind of still all treed. So, with that, let's kind of dig into the presentations a little bit more. First, I'd like to introduce actually Jack Meredith, Jack, if you want to come up. Jack is on the board of the Sarasota Housing Authority. He is also a director with Harvard Jolly and PBK. And so, Jack, welcome to the conversation.
Good morning. Yes, as Jody mentioned, I am director of Harvard Jolly PBK's Sarasota office. Thank you. Good morning. Yes, as Jody mentioned, I'm director of Sarasota's PBK Harvard Jolly office, and we've partnered with you on several of your schools. In addition to that, I am the proud parent of a Pine View High School senior and a Suncoast Polytech High School freshman. So, I'm happy to be here today to present this to you. And also with me, I have John Wiseman from JP Wiseman Construction, who would help out on some of the financial analysis of this.
Good morning. My name again is John Wiseman, president of JP Wiseman Construction. I just thought it'd be easier and quicker if I just prepared a statement and read it, so get as much information as quickly as possible. While we have induced build school projects, one of the emphasis our company has is multifamily rental housing. Over the past 30 years, we've started building apartments of more than, we built more than 20,000 units in Florida, approximately half of them have had some sort of subsidy, federal, state, or local government. When Jack asked me to join for this workshop, I was very interested and excited to hear that the school board was interested in doing this. My son is a teacher at Riverview High School. I know how difficult affordable housing is for teachers. All reports indicate, and I believe this is an A-plus district, so what you're doing is an A-plus move. It's hard to attract these men and women without housing they can afford. To begin with the end in mind, Jack and I believe that the district should decide whether they're pursuing a rental housing business plan or a housing-for-sale business plan. To that end, we do not think a for-sale product would give the district the highest and best return for their investment, whatever that investment may be. A for-sale product would give very worthy individuals or families a great personal one-time benefit. Once conveyed, the district loses control of their investment, and any subsequent benefit of that investment goes to the owner of the property. This would be a handout. A rental option would allow the district to maintain control of a pathway to attract new teachers to our community and allow them to have a time in a safe, high-quality, affordable rental community until they have the ability to invest in a home of their own, make way for the next A-plus teacher you're attracting to, trying to attract or convinced to stay in the district. This would be a handout. With either path, you will quickly see there's a funding gap between the cost of safe, affordable housing and the funds that will be available. This is a source and use equation of funds needed. You all do this every day in running this district. Having been an affordable housing builder, you develop strong relationships with others in your industry, close friends with heads of construction for two very large, nationally-known affordable housing developers. They are in different regions of the country. Both would love to build in Florida, neither of them does, for the same reason, there's not enough soft money available, so projects do not work financially. Please remember the term "soft money." Soft money, whether borrowed or given, is what is needed to fill the gap between the cost and available firm or hard funds. While both were curious and admired your intentions, one of my friends took the time to walk me through a hypothetical pro forma. We used some of the variables that Jack will present. I was impressed with what he covered and the information he collected in our one-hour Zoom call. I do not have the detailed work product to share with you until further specifics, but I can share that depending on what scenario we followed, a funding gap exists between $5 and $15 million for any project. Solving this funding gap, as well as operational expertise, is why it's important to partner with an entity like Sarasota Housing Authority. They have operation and management capability and are credible source of procurement of soft money to complete the capital stack needed to be successful. Jack's going to explain everything in a little more detail, so thank you.
All right. Well, I must say, when Jody approached me about the possibility of working with you to develop this parcel, I thought it would be a great opportunity to possibly do a combination of affordable housing and workforce housing. This could really be beneficial in the sense, when combining the two, you're able to get additional finance resources from providing public finances in addition to private finances as well. Then, this would also provide affordable housing for not only your teachers, but also for the community that you serve. One great example of this may be a project you might be aware of. The Sarasota Housing Authority developed Lofts on Lemon in downtown Sarasota, and that contained 52 units of workforce housing and 76 units of affordable housing. To do this, we were able to combine public and private funding to make that happen. And this development really stood out in the community because it was developed in a manner that you wouldn't really see the difference between any of the other developments downtown. So, it really fit in with even the million-dollar condos and also with the high-rent apartments that are currently associated with downtown Sarasota.
Yep. Do you want to click through it? You got it?
So, we've analyzed this in a way by first analyzing market feasibility, the technical feasibility of this site, and then also the financial feasibility. At first, I'd like to define workforce housing, because there's a lot of perceptions, a lot of different ways that people perceive workforce and affordable housing. Affordable housing is defined as housing that serves families or individuals at or below 80% median income. And this is industry standard for affordable housing. Workforce housing is defined as housing near job centers for families or individuals with an AMI of 81% to 140%, where they can live affordably near work every day with little commute. Both of these fit entry level and upper levels of teachers in Sarasota County schools. Second, I'd like to talk about Sarasota, the income levels currently. Sarasota median income, based off of Systix's 2023, defined the median household income as $78,000-plus. I spoke with our executive director, William Russell, just the other day, and he informed me, you know, we're actually bridging over $90,000 right now. So, this is really putting a strain on a lot of individuals, especially teachers, where if they're just a single teacher, a single household, they're really struggling to make ends meet. And then also, stats show that 70% of renters and 62% of homeowners with incomes below 80% AMI are paying more than 30% of their income for housing. Of these, 45% pay more than 50% on housing. Then, we need to take a look at housing costs. This shows, as of March of 2024, the average rent in Sarasota, Florida is $1,824 per month. This is 20% higher than national average rent price of $1,498, making Sarasota one of the most expensive cities in the U.S. Market rents show about $1,242 a month for a one-bedroom, and then $1,800 for a one-bedroom, $2,240 for a two-bedroom, and $2,952 for a three-bedroom. When analyzing HUD's rates and income level limits at an 80% AMI, this reduces rents by $1,300 for a two-bedroom, $1,600 for a three-bedroom, and $1,900 for a three-bedroom. These figures can substantially decrease income to rent levels for teachers, make it more affordable to live in Sarasota. So, second, we start to analyze the site. The current site is divided between two parcels, as Mr. Dumas mentioned, one being RSF-1, the other RSF-2. In the RSF-1 zoning district, on the 20-acre site that you have, this would allow for 50 single-family homes being constructed. Current zoning of the single-family homes on the west lot of RSF-2 zoning at 21 acres would allow for 73 single-family homes. To maximize site development and provide the best use of this site and affordability, multifamily housing should be considered. This option would require a comp plan amendment and a rezone to a multifamily district. This study analyzes changing the west parcel with RSFM-2 zoning to RFM-2 to provide 189 units of workforce in affordable housing, leaving the parcel with RSF-1 zoning for future use. That parcel could possibly be developed in the future for even a single-family homes, which may help renters merge that gap and come to the point where they can afford affordable single-family home houses. When analyzing possible financial solution, our solution is that Sarasota County schools would donate the west parcel of 21-acre site. The site would accommodate 189 units with a mix of workforce housing and affordable housing, based on percentages of public and private funding. The site would be developed, constructed by the developer and Sarasota Housing Authority or other entity through private-public funding. Workforce housing units would be from 81% to 140% AMI funded through private funding. Affordable housing units would be at 80% AMI funded through public funding. Rents would be approximately $1,400 per month for a one-bedroom, $1,600 for a two-bedroom, $1,900 for the three-bedroom, with utilities included. These rent amounts would be based on HUD's income and rent levels of 80% AMI. The Sarasota Housing Authority private development would provide operating and cost of maintenance, and the cost to build would be approximately $43,470 at $230,000 per unit. There would be some, due to the rezone aspect of it, you know, that would have to, that would be, take a little bit of a process to develop that site, because we have to go to a rezone. However, analyzing the map, there are multifamilies in the area, so that's something that, going forward with the county to get their approval, might be beneficial to make that happen. But we've been working with Sarasota County schools for a while, on behalf of the Sarasota Housing Authority, and we'd love, you know, the opportunity to work with you again and possibly develop the site. So, if you have any questions, we had an answer for you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I have just a quick question. You mentioned Lofts on Lemon, and I apologize if this is, if you don't know this offhand, but the scope is similar. Do you know what that, what the rate or what the cost rental rate was for Lofts on Lemon? Do we know?
The cost rental rates? Well, they are similar to the stat that I have on the income limits. So, those income limits are based off of a HUD guideline, so those are pretty consistent with what I just spoke to you about regarding the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units.
And do we know, and I haven't looked at it that closely, and so maybe, Mr. Edwards, you know as well, what the capacity, were they able to rent them all out, or were they...
Yes, so we were, there was a long waiting list for it all, but we were able to rent it all out. There's still a waiting list currently.
And it was to targeted certain...
Well, we did have, so it was a combination of the two, so we had workforce and affordable housing. So, 52 units were considered workforce housing. And doing that, we have to break it up with, in order to get, when we get public funding, we can't utilize that for workforce housing. So, that's why it was a combination of private and public funding. So, the 52 units of workforce housing were satisfied with a combination of teachers, nurses, police officers. I don't really, I don't have that particular breakdown.
No, that's okay. Just so it was for, just to compare. Thank you.
I'd be interested, perhaps, Mr. Dumas, you have that data on what would have filled those units that was Sarasota County staff?
Yes, and I can provide those for you.
Thank you. And what those rents were for them? I think getting down into those details, if we're approaching this subject, is beneficial. Ms. Marinelli, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll be asking all participants, presenters, the same question, but how do you know that teachers will take advantage of this, if they will want to? How many, like, teachers have taken advantage of the Lofts on Lemon?
Well, that's a stat I can find out for you, as far as how many teachers. But overall, when you really look at the need for affordable housing, we hear all the time that teachers and workforce are really struggling to obtain affordable housing. And with this particular site, too, I think it's beneficial, and it's pretty much centrally located to a lot of your schools. So, I think it would be beneficial and very attractive to a lot of your teachers because of the location, and it is situated in a residential area that is close to Tamey Ami, in addition to 75. So, you know, it's hard for me to really say and predict how many teachers might want to benefit that, but I think, given the attraction of having quality, affordable housing, I think that will be very attractive to not only your existing teachers, but also teachers considering working for the school board.
Well, and as a former teacher, and single at that time, and young, yeah, it was a problem 40-some years ago for Sarasota. So, it just has gotten more. But I, you know, we get the plus and the minuses, so I think it's really important to know that it's what they're being called and the quality of how it's being built.
Right. Well, that is absolutely correct. And I know that on our, the Housing Authority Board itself, I could speak with them, and we make sure that all our construction is quality construction, so we make sure we utilize masonry walls. Most of our floors are made of hollow core concrete, because we want those to last. And if you look at some of the developments that we've recently done in Sarasota, that you can see those, that quality, too. And as I mentioned with Lofts on Lemon, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know the difference between a million-dollar condo and the development of Lofts on Lemon, same with the higher-rent districts in Sarasota. So, that's one of the things that we're very keen on, is making sure we develop quality, affordable homes.
Okay, thank you.
And just one point to make, too. When I mentioned 80%, basically, the homes would be 80% above AMI. So, that would, that's really a mixture of almost, you know, middle-class income levels. So, it's really a good mix from middle income to upper middle income as well. So, I think it'd be a good mix, and I think that would also be attractive to individuals living there.
Anyone else? Mr. Enos? Mr. Edwards? Okay. Is there anything, Superintendent Connor, you'd like to add?
No, we just appreciate you taking the time to do this study, and we look forward, we look forward to further conversation, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and I'll get those stats back to you, too. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I'd like to call up Mark Vengroth from One Stop Housing. He is the managing partner for that organization.
Good morning.
Welcome.
My name's Mark Vengroth. I'm the managing partner for One Stop Housing. This is my associate, our head of development, Stefan Barron. So, thank you for having us here. I thought I'd give a little bit of a background. It's okay if I start?
You're good.
Yeah, oh, good. I thought I'd give you a little background on One Stop Housing for those who aren't familiar with us, go through some of the current engagements that we're doing, a lot of which are partnerships, very similar to what we're describing today, and then kind of go through some options, the way we see some good options as at least of a pathway forward. So, oh, cool. Thank you. So, One Stop Housing was actually started 40 years ago from my father, Harvey Vengroth, some of you may know. He had a very philanthropic mission, we're a for-profit company with a very philanthropic mission. He always believed that if you work... He always believed that if you work, you deserve a safe, clean, and affordable roof over your head, that you can afford on your own, without subsidies, without vouchers, and that those people take more pride in their apartment, they take better care, they become better neighbors, and they thrive. And we've seen that. We have about 4,000 units that are currently owner-managed, and we continue to grow that portfolio. 100% of everything we do, 100%, is at 80% of AMI or less. I'd say about 30% of the portfolio is restricted by a LORA, a land use restriction agreement. 70% of our property or properties, they don't have any restriction. We just want to continue with the philanthropic mission of making sure that it's affordable. And so we build very nice, high-end, luxury apartments. The only difference is we just have the rent set at 80% or less. In many cases, they're 60%. The way we do this, we're not taking, we're able to design and build without taking subsidies today. We do that by bringing all of those trades in-house. So we are a licensed general contractor, who has, our construction firm has 18 years' experience. We're licensed plumbers, licensed electricians, licensed roofers, so all those costs have been eliminated because we're, we're just basically paying it forward and being able to keep the rents low. So it's quite simple. Our designs are very simple. We have a studio, a one-bedroom, and a two-bedroom. They all look the same. At least the kitchens and the bathrooms are all the same. So we're developing about 800 of these units right now, and so we're going out and we're buying 800 refrigerators, 800 custom countertops, 800 custom cabinets for the kitchens and the bathrooms. So we're able to get these great efficiencies, and by value engineering the units, and by the economies of scale, we keep our costs low, and hence pay it forward. We do have a property management firm. We are CAM-licensed. We've had that for about 40 years, and we do have a nonprofit. A lot of families that live in these are all working individuals, great, but every now and then someone takes a wrong turn in life, and they need to wrap around services. So just to kind of help them with whatever might have occurred. So I'm just going to show you a few projects, and then kind of go into, because I think the best way to describe how to work together is kind of show what we've done and how we are partnering. This is one development. We've actually partnered with the Manatee County. It's called The Nest. It's 182 units, all of which are 60% to 80% AMI, and they're studio, one and two bedrooms, with all the utilities included. This is one recently that we just started working with Michael Saunders, and she owns land downtown Sarasota. She felt very grateful that the community has really helped her to build her business, and she wanted to give back. So we're partnering with her. She doesn't want to be a landlord, she doesn't want to build, she doesn't want to deal with that, because that's not what she does. So basically, we're doing 100%. She owns the property. We're doing the development, the fine capital stack, helping line up the lenders, putting into the construction, and then managing the property, and then those proceeds go back to a foundation or an organization of hers, that she gets to spend how she likes. And so that, I thought that was a great example on this. Downtown Sarasota, we're able to build and keep this at 80% under AMI. Half of these units, we've already designated for the Sarasota County Sheriff's Office. This is so close to the dispatch, so that, we thought that'd be kind of cool to earmark those for them. We partnered with the City of Orlando, and literally partnered. They had a property, it's an old hotel that we were able to convert. When we take conversions, we're able to save about 30% of the cost, but this was a very belited neighborhood. There was, they didn't want to condemn the property because they were afraid of the headline risk, obviously, of moving families out. So we came in with their help and basically cleaned up the neighborhood, and been able to build out 150 beautiful apartments, mainly around 60% to 70% of AMI. This is Sarasota Station. This is a development that we're working on. It's 202 units, right there in downtown, wrapped around with the Ringling Brother and Circus, Ringling Brother and Barnum &amp; Berry Circus Cars, which, if you've eaten at Bob Horn's Restaurant, it's pretty cool. So that'll still be there. But you can see the exterior, this is an interior corridor. The units of the interior corridor and the exterior corridor units are almost identical. This is one I'm really proud of. We've actually, we're partnering with the Bradenton Area Economic Development Board, and eight of the larger employers in Manatee County, all of names you would know. And basically, they're basically putting the investment into the development. The public funds are coming in, usually to help us with impact fees and expediting the development, or permitting. And then we're coming in, we're putting the capital stack together, helping them do it the development plan, and then managing the property, and this will be just for their employees. So if you want to work in this amenity-rich, beautiful community, you have to work for one of these eight employers. And so it's something similar, which is pretty cool. These are the apartment layouts. They vary in size, but the kitchens and bathrooms are all very similar, and that's how we get the economies of scale, in order to really build affordably. One way in which we did, you know, how do you know how large, what kind of units you need, how many one-bedrooms, how many two-bedrooms, the sizes and so forth, is, we recommend, this is what we did with the Manatee County EDC, is we surveyed all of their employees. So we have about 700 employees, surveys that came back, and we were able to understand the family size, their wages. We want to make sure that the rent is set at least at 30% or below, and understanding their family size, how large the units needed to be, what type of amenities do they like or do they need. And so we were able to build this community around, after surveying, and really understanding the needs of their employees, and in your case, your staff or teachers. I'm going to turn this over to Stefan. He's going to talk about the property itself.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Good morning. So just want to give you a quick overview.
Hit your button.
Good morning. All right. Just a quick overview of what our approach would be on developing this site. So this is an overview of the aerial map of the site, which we took a look at earlier, so I'm going to skip over that. So basically, what we would like to do, in terms of development and zoning, we like to keep the zoning pretty much in line with what it currently is, because we feel like there's enough room on the, on the property to put enough units, or at least phase it, you know, in a primary phase. So what we would do, because of the, because this piece of property specifically has a lot of wetland, we like to, we would like to minimize the impact of wetland whenever possible. So we would maximize the development on, on the one side of the property, where it is currently shown now, and try to leave the current wetland intact, so we don't, we don't impact our environment. We would do that in a term, so we can, we, our vision for this is to do a cluster of four-town homes, and buildings of four-town homes, and the advantage of doing that is, number one, you'll see on this slide here that, you can see all the trees, we're not, we're not impacting the trees, we're not impacting the wetlands. We're keeping the development somewhat compact, but yet we're blending it with the surrounding environment. And in terms of the type of unit that we were thinking of doing, we're proposing a mix of two- or three-bedroom, depending on the, on when we get the surveys back from, from the teachers, as far as what the needs are. And we would, what we try to do is, to mark sport, we try to keep everything cost-effective when we, when we develop and build them. So one of the reasons we, we like the approach of a townhome is because we have a common partition wall between each unit. So again, we minimize material expenses. We also minimize the site work by keeping the development somewhat compact, so we feel like it's, and, and yet you still give a community that is easily walkable, that blends in with its environment, and that doesn't, that is not overbearing on its local environment. So this is our kind of philosophy when we design the, when we design these properties. Of course, we take into account the cost, and we try to maximize our construction costs based on expenses, and also, but we also take into account the impact on our local community and surroundings, to make sure that nothing adversely impacts the community while we're going to be working in. Thank you.
So with, obviously, with these rental, these as rentals, we were seeing that there's really four ways in order to structure a potential partnership or a development option. The first one is just a complete turnkey, and that's really why the name One Stop Housing, that's kind of what we specialize in doing, is, is we come in, do the full development, do the full construction, help with the capital stack, work with your treasury, and, and then manage through the construction, and then manage the apartments, once they're up and running. Obviously, through surveying of the teachers and the staff, we have an idea of what to build, and then through your selection process, they come in, and we basically take care of everything else from there. I think the last thing the district wants to do is be a landlord, or a builder, or whatever it may be, but, you know, does, but dictating through the design of those. I think giving the land away, or doing, giving the land away, or selling the land, there's so much value that can be created through this, and there's cash flow that can definitely come out of these developments that could be used into your foundation, or can be used into some other programs. And so now you can convert a city, a great asset that you have that's sitting, and you can convert it into a revenue generator to really help other programs for the, for the district. So, and we've done everything from tax-exempt bonds and debt structure capital, and there's so many different ways of doing this without, and we've got the expertise in-house to help along that path. So that'd be one. The other, we've seen this model before, is where you just take the land and you're leasing it. So you're hanging on to the land itself, you lease the land, you get a lease payment, and under that lease agreement, you would reserve a certain number, if not the entire development, or have first-rate refusal to rent those to your staff or teachers, and so forth. So that's, that's another way to do it. The other was to form a new co. Basically, you're taking that land and you're rolling it in as your equity, and then we, us or a developer basically becomes your business partner, with the guidelines that we're responsible for the capital stack, putting together any of the funding requirements, building it, debt capital included, and then, you know, managing that property within the confines that know that a certain number of those units need to be set aside for staff or teachers, at a set rental price. The other is to purchase the property, which honestly, I think is a great asset, be wonderful to purchase the property, but I, I would, you know, you're giving away something that's really valuable, and then all the upside is going to the purchaser. So, but if you did do a purchase, there, there could be a discounted lease agreement. So basically, you're leasing back a certain portion of those units back to the teachers and staff. And, and so those are the four outlines of programs that we've seen, three of which we've got quite a bit of experience in, but, you know, as far as recommendation. I think that's it on our side, yeah.
Questions? Comments? Mr. Edwards, please.
You know I'm a fan already.
Thank you.
The model that I'm most familiar with would be if, if the land were not part of the expense of, the equation of building all of the units, that the partner, the, yourself, there would be no expense, whether it's building, all of that, and that it would go to your business model of affordable housing, management of rental units, so forth and so on. Is, is that the model here? Is that the, the option that we're talking about?
That's the one I'm recommending, yes.
Okay, okay. So for the purposes of this conversation, is that the school district would not be in the construction business, not in the management of the business, but because they donated the land, that it, the benefits would be 100% given to teachers and staff, and so forth and so on?
Correct. And the, and there would be a lot of input on design, the amenities that we would include. I mean, there's a business partnership there. We're responsible to make sure we execute on the overall plan, but the plan would be collaborative on exactly what gets built, to who are we renting to, what are those rental rates set to, because there's a, there's a cash flow that comes out of that as well, so.
Great. One of the things that I just want, for the purposes of this conversation, is I've been paying attention to workforce housing for about four years, as it relates to the school district. So I feel that I've done a lot of due diligence, trying to figure out what's in the best interest of the school district, and primarily, from my perspective, it's to remain as competitive as possible, particularly on the entry-level teacher side. It's no secret that when we're bargaining for salaries and compression, and the challenges that go into bargaining to, and, and trying to stay competitive on the front end of entry-level salaries, that having an option for teachers, that where it's affordable for them to get in, we heard from the Housing Authority about how expensive, you know, that we're automatically out of the gate at $90,000, and our teachers are somewhere in the 50s. There's a challenge right then and there for entry-level folks, and if they're not living with mom and dad, there's a hurdle for them to get through. So from my perspective, it's on the recruiting side, on the front end. Obviously, if there are teachers that are available, that want to make that conversion in a, in a more affordable situation. But lastly, I also think there's an incentive for retiring teachers who want to stay in the area, perhaps capitalize on their investment from their home equity, and become volunteers back to the school district. So there's all kinds of community benefits here that I, I have been talking about for many years for the school district, and I, I hope we, we see a conclusion. But my, I'm not necessarily, when we started this conversation, and forgive me, Jody, if, we had sort of ruled out the 40-acre parcel on the front end, because it's a valuable asset, and that for the school district to kind of put their toe in the water and see how this works, what the partnership looks like, was that we were talking about smaller parcels of land that might already be at school sites, that can be unbundled, and smaller units, allowing the school district to see how this feels, and does it, is it successful? I heard Mrs. Marinelli concerned, are, are teachers actually going to use this? This, there is, there's a smaller way to try to do this without giving up our 40 acres right from the get-go. So I'm asking that question.
Oh, yeah, the, we, we were provided this parcel of land, so we use that as an example, I think.
Exactly. I get it.
Where that is, it doesn't matter. We're, we're all over the state, and, and you could, the sizing of the parcel or the community, we're, it's very flexible, I'm sure, that, that, you know, and you can even take this existing parcel and size it down accordingly. We're just trying to show what can be done.
And in the worst-case scenario, I, I think I already know the answer to this, but I want to make sure the public does. You've never not been able to rent, once you've been, once you've built, is that correct?
We have 4,000 units. We have a waiting list of 100 individuals on every property, every property, and we get, in Sarasota County alone, we're getting 140 phone calls every day. That doesn't count the web applications, it doesn't count referrals. I mean, referrals and web applications would fill up these proper apartment. So God forbid that you didn't fill these, for whatever reason. There's plenty of demand, and there will be demand for a while, in order to make sure that that was a safe investment.
Great. Thank you.
I'm on record saying that.
I'm sure I'm going to have other questions.
Sure.
Down the road, but I just wanted to make sure that, that the public or board understood that the, part of the development picture for any developer is the expense of the land.
Yeah.
And if we're the partner that's delivering the land, and as Jody mentioned, I think initially, one of our challenges with partnering with the sheriff, or the county, or the hospital, was that there wasn't available funds for them to donate, and they didn't really have land to donate. And so we were a great partner, but had challenges trying to find other partners who were going to be, and that's why this model works so great for the school district, because it's still no additional expense other than the, the donation of the land.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. Well, I'm, I'm familiar with the work you guys do, and it's, it's really amazing, and I appreciate, this is a great presentation, by the way. I, not unlike Mr. Edwards, I've not, I've really haven't focused on workforce housing as the, for, for the school district, being, and we'll take, talk about this later, but being focused on making sure we master our academic piece, but it's not off the table. I'm glad we're having the discussion. But forgive me, I'm very familiar with development projects, but I have not looked at it through the lens of us being, participating in it. So when it comes to other projects you've done, have you done other school districts? I know this, you mentioned sheriff.
No.
No, okay. Because I always like to look at where, where Because I always like to look at where has this been successful, or what were the issues? And so one thing is, I have no doubt we could probably get full capacity and rent them all out, as you noted. But the goal in my mind is making sure we're making it desirable to staff. I mean, that's the goal. And so I'd be curious what that looks like. And so the closest comparison would be...
I think, it's great, you know, we do have, I text after your question. And just locally, we know that one of the property managers, we have at least a dozen teachers living on our properties today, so there is a desire there. You know, by survey, I really believe in surveying. I think it's surveying the staff and teachers, or even the recruits that you're looking at, to understand what kind of amenities and housing, what are the requirements? A daycare center onsite, a telehealth center maybe onsite. And we built those and have those on some of our facilities. So, you know, creating those amenities that may be a little more unique into this type of engagement, I think are true attractors that will really be beneficial.
And then you have, and I think of things from a liability standpoint, because I'm thinking, okay, we are a school district, we're an employer, and then you have a lot of people living on one spot that are also employees technically. And so it's a completely separate entity, I mean, they're of virtue on, I just, I have to think about potential issues.
That's a really great question. So we've come across that question from the employer community that we're building. And they're all large companies, they don't want the liability. They want to make sure there's an arm's length. So we've actually created a new company. They have equity ownership in the new company, but that's it. They get participation back from their investment into that company or that development. But from there, we're the manager of the entity, we're the property manager. We have all the proper liability and coverages and insurance to wrap around, to make sure that if in the event something did catastrophic, we've got coverage. But really, it's, we're the ones on the line.
Gotcha. And that's the third recommendation, is that right?
Yeah.
The structuring from the financial standpoint, right? Okay. I'm sure I'll have more questions, but those are to start, thank you so much.
Great questions, thank you.
Ms. Marinelli? Mr. Enos?
You know, as a principal for 14 years, recruiting teachers to Sarasota was relatively feasible. I could do that. I could not keep at least 50% of them for more than two years unless they found a partner, roommate, et cetera. So it's definitely a challenge. From a data standpoint, I think it behooves us as a district, if we aren't looking at that now, that we start to potentially accumulate that data of teachers that are leaving us in their first years, does it have to do with housing? I know experientially and informally, I can tell you that it was annual. Come to Florida, that's an easy sell, come to Sarasota, even better. But live here, once you get here, extraordinarily difficult. So there is a need, and there's a need for teachers that have been here for a while to have appropriate division of their income, how much goes for housing, and how much can they actually live off of? So I would like to see if there's consensus on the board and the superintendent and Mr. Dumas find it feasible that we start to, whether it's exit interviews or how do districts look at that? So as we walk down this road, we have something to share with the public that substantiates decisions that we're considering. Is that something the board is interested in?
To me, it makes most sense, because otherwise, we're assuming someone needs it or wants it, and then to go through that process.
And if I may, we're coming to the point in the year where we would normally survey our staff, just an annual climate survey. So I think that we can incorporate some of that information, so we're not over-surveying our staff members. So I think timing is actually good at this point, where we can do both simultaneously.
And I knew as a principal, one second, Ms. Marinelli, please. I knew as a principal which teachers were leaving, and, you know, it's apparent. I'm not going to be able to stay here mid-year. You know, you need to know that I'm finding my way back home, whether that's Pennsylvania, Ohio, et cetera. So, you know, even, it's just some means of showing the public that there is a need that is very real. Ms. Marinelli, please.
Yeah, I think one of the pluses that I liked was that you survey and you see what teachers want. Because even though I was young and didn't make a lot of money, I still wanted that Fiji house, but on my poor budget. So I think using quality products and designing, I think that is appealing. For me, it's just, and not every young person always thinks like this, but renting with a path to ownership, and how does that all work? And knowing that a lot of that responsibility is on me, to save my money too, and live within my budget. So I think there's just some things that, you know, and I don't want to get into this business either, but, you know, financing, you know, kind of explaining to young people, now that you're out of college and you're on your own and blah, 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 this is how much you have, da-da-da-da-da. So when they get to that point, they can set money aside so they can own, if that's what they want to do. Some people don't want to own their own home. So, but I do like that thing where you use quality projects, products. Because if they're like me, I want that Fiji, but I'm that low.
You know, our nonprofit does a lot of the wraparound services, and to your point, they'll partner with a lot of the local banks, they'll come in and do educational courses for the tenants. And then they open it up to the community, how to save, learn about compounding interest, and what if you put $5 a week in your checking or your savings account, what would that mean? And then how, what's the pathway to homeownership?
Even though my parents taught me that, not everybody has that. And it's still, when you're young, you don't always think like that until you're signing your name. And it's like, oh, this is a big deal, I better make sure. So having that from a banking would be an asset, I think. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, please.
I think that the most recent polling has shown that quality teachers and retention of those teachers, to your point of turnover, at the year or two mark, is what the community has told us already that they're interested in. I'm pretty sure that we have probably some kind of mechanism to get a general feel of what entry-level recruitment has been like over the last two, three years, and how many people turn down jobs because they couldn't... I know that, I've heard that from principals who try to get and fill their own jobs, that they get so far as to get wonderful, great people, and then at the 11th hour, they get people that aren't coming as entry-level because they couldn't find housing and they've had to re-engineer. So I think there's some of that data already available, maybe not specifically from a survey, but a general kind of feel from what HR and principals can tell us on a shorter time period. Because the longer we, and again, I know this has taken a long time to get on an agenda to discuss from my perspective, and the longer we procrastinate on this, the more expensive it becomes and the kinds of things that we're losing when we already know that in general, affordable and workforce housing is a big issue here in Sarasota. It's always in the news. So I'm anxious and happy to hear that the board is ready to look at data and trying to capture that quickly, and see if we can't find a way, once we gather that information, to create a pilot program.
Please.
Just a quick follow-up. So it was mentioned, again, this is not the space that I've looked at us as board members of the school district. So I'm still trying to wrap my head around that. But the part about renting to ownership is really, I think, important if we're trying to help lift people up for their sustainability. And I don't know if there's, I mean, I know that's not really necessarily the business y'all are in as far as multifamily or what have you. But are you familiar with any programs or something like that? That would be something we should be considering.
Yeah, we're actually working on a couple of developments of just that. We're building these townhomes and looking for them to either rent, to own, to end up have a pathway to homeownership, because that's been really important as part of the overall mission.
Right.
A lot of the developments where we're in, we will go in, we'll buy or build 200 units. And then the neighborhoods may not, because of the land costs, will go into maybe a little less desirable neighborhood and really make it beautiful. And then we'll buy up a couple of homes in the streets that surround those properties with the idea that we'll go in, we'll buy it, we'll renovate it, and then we'll sell it to one of our tenants that was in an existing property. And we've done that about 15 times so far, about 15 times so far. And with the employer development that we're looking at, depending on the parcel that's allotted, if there's enough land like you have on this here, we were looking at, our first phase would be multifamily. Second phase would be a pathway to homeownership in Phase Two, once the first phase was completed. So people can then, there are options for them to purchase a home.
And when it comes to, you mentioned this similarly, I think it was the Michael Saunders property, which had earmarked X amount for the sheriff's department. So as far as, and this is more of a legal question, but again, not looking at the space of making sure it's equal opportunity for everyone. What does that look like from, are we able to earmark and say, no, if you're not an employee, you're not eligible?
Yeah, so we had a whole slew of attorneys work on that stuff with us. So this isn't me. But you're contributing the land either into a new entity, a partnership, or even a lease. You can dictate the terms within that that basically are earmarking, that these or certain number need to be set aside as first right of refusal to be rented to a teacher or staff from the district. And so you can do that.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. And Mr. Edwards, I know has brought this up a lot, and again, Mr. Connor and I talked about this, and we're at the fact-finding phase. And I appreciate the expeditiousness, because it is an issue in Sarasota, there's no question about it. I may ask lots of questions, because I want to make sure we're looking multiple steps ahead. But I appreciate all the information you guys have brought, so thank you so much.
And I want to reinforce, Mrs. Ziegler, thank you for bringing that up. I, you know, as we continue to fact-find and look and see how we can benefit from an educational organization, from a venture like this, the option of the dream of owning your own home, how does that fit into a plan? If you want to recruit, and just not recruit, but retain. And owning your own home in Sarasota just gets more and more difficult. And, you know, how would we go about building that into a plan for our employees as well? So I like that idea in the fact-finding process of what that actually means with all the variables at hand. Mr. Enos, anything?
Only question I would have in reference to this is because, and here's the bottom line for me, is it comes back down to the rents, because I know having kids that are rental age, right now in Sarasota, you can get a two-bedroom, two-story for $1,856 a month. That's kind of what they're renting at for right now. So when we start talking about this, is that, to me, one of the concerns that I have is if we said, okay, it's $1,856 a month, there's five spots that we can go to at $1,856 a month instead of going here. So when I look at that, I say, okay, what ultimately, you know, because I worry about, you know, as an example, it was $1,856 a month, one-year lease, at the end of the year, they've charged them, they increased by $300. So my son's rent's now gone up by $300. And the end of the day is, is okay, well, it costs you to move, that's comparable to pay the extra $300 a month, so it's just kind of a shell game that's going on. So my concern is, is what latitude, or what is it in regard to specifying? Because in reference to contributing the land, my understanding is we're not contributing, we're owning the land, you're building the land, you're developing the land, you're renting, you're doing the stuff, you're managing it. All of those things come back. We can then say, all of the units are only going to be used for district employees, since that land was for the school district to build. The question is, is what do we have that you don't come back and say, well, you know, construction costs have gone up, and management's gone up, and now we're going up $350 a month? So hey, you know, instead of $1,850, it's $2,100, $2,200, take it or leave it. So in all of these things, that's really my only level. Because at the end of the day, if we're trying to make it so, if you're at $57,000 and you need a one-bedroom, that you're going to be affordable and not paying the same rate that you're going down to the community.
Sure, that's a great question. So I'll answer historically, but I could, obviously, within a land use restriction agreement of some sort could be created or crafted that ensures that the rents are at a certain level based on AMI, or it could be based on 30% of the targeted staff's salaries, I mean, with utilities included. So there's a lot of things that can be drawn up into an agreement like that to ensure that the right behavior is kept. Historically, just for us, over the last five years, I think we raised our rents by $100, $150 a month in total. And our rents today are well below, anywhere between 20% to 40% below market, though they don't need to be. So historically, and we're making money. So, you know, it's the ability to generate a profit, but not gouge the end user. And we basically manage ourselves to a certain margin. This is what we believe as an investment we should be able to generate. And we manage to that. During COVID, our building costs, we had two big projects that we're working on during COVID. When all the prices were going crazy, we were locked in on our original price, we went over budget 2%, 2%. Otherwise, since we've acquired the construction company, have it all in-house, we've always been on budget, on time, once we got the permitted plans in hand. Getting to the permitted plans in hand, I can't promise, because there's so many different variables. But that gives you somewhat of an idea, and, you know, I think there's rising costs. Right now, rising costs, we've seen year over year, and these are, I can provide these. Year over year, we had insurance, you have insurance, costs went up 30% to 60%, depending on the property for us, our experience. Our property taxes went up about 12% to 14% year over year, for the most part. And utilities went up 15, I'm sorry, 18% to 30%, depending on the property, year over year. So those are our three biggest costs. Year over year, bottom line, all our expenses went up less than 1% from year over year, through value engineering, through being a lot smarter in how do we drive repairs and maintenance. We're training our staff, we've got refrigeration repair, heating repair, and we're putting them through the certification. Now they're part of the team, and they're floating, just taking care of those expenses, and that took out a big chunk. So it's just maintaining the properties properly and really being smart on how we operationalize these things to keep our costs down, so that we're still able to stay true to our mission, having low rents and not having to raise the rents like everyone else, and still adhere to a financial outcome that we need, you know, to keep it financially stable.
I just would say, I think you're honoring your father's vision very much.
I appreciate that.
Knowing him all those years ago.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, thank you. My contact information is in here, if any other questions, we love talking about this stuff. So, you know, feel free to reach out, any data points you might need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys, I appreciate it, thank you. All right, next I'd like to invite up Ivory Matthews. She is the Vice President of Governmental Affairs and Community Affairs for Neal Communities.
Hi, good morning. Is that quicker?
Yep.
Yes, thank you. Hi, good morning, my name is Ivory Matthews. I work for Neal Communities, and I've been a Neal team member for 13 years. Neal builds from Tampa to Naples. We've built in this area for over 50 years. And about a year ago, we sat down as an executive team, and we did a study in the current market to sort of see where our home buyers are and who is not able to purchase a home. And we noticed that it was our young professionals. It was, you know, the gap in the market is at that $300,000 range. And it's very, very hard to find a $300,000 house, brand new, in Sarasota County right now. So what we did is we created SimplyDwell. And I want to introduce Jagrap Narin. He is the Division President for SimplyDwell. And SimplyDwell was able to fill that gap in the market. And we have an exciting project in Manatee County, and Jag's going to sort of walk you through some of that.
Thanks for the time, board. We'll talk a little bit more about the business plan and what we can do and partnering together. You know, as Ivory said... You know, as Ivory said, we went on a path of creating a home building company that's focused on attainable housing. Our model is homeownership. We want to take your teachers and people in the district into homeownership. So that's our business. We want to take them out of the rental circus and get them into a home, and a home that they can afford, that fits their needs. You know, we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to do that, and how we are actively doing that right now. So we've got six projects planned for Southwest Florida that are of substantial size. This particular project that's on the board is 266 homes. How we're going to hit the affordable targets is through value engineering, consistent production cycle, and you'll see here that we'll start two homes a week, every week. What that does for our trade partners is it gives consistent production, and therefore comes the pricing. So if the trade can come out and know that every week that they get two housing, they can dedicate a crew to our project, and that crew stays on our project, which gives us quality, gives us consistency, and gives us the best price. In order to do that, we need to go pre-plan the whole community and identify what house we're putting on every lot ahead of time, and go get permits ahead of time, right? So our system looks like we've got 50 permits ahead, sitting on the shelf, so there's no delay in starting a home. When we pull them off the shelf, we start the home, and that home finishes in 85 days, and it's got predefined option sets in the home. So there's no complexity as it relates to what is the end price versus the advertised price. The homeowner can see what that price is and understand whether that fits their needs or not. We've got 10 floor plans that they can pick from that would match their needs. The square footage bands go from 1,300 square foot to 2,600 square feet. The bedroom configuration goes from two-bedroom to five-bedroom. What we've learned so far is there is a big demand for a five-bedroom, four-bedroom house. That buyer is getting left out. When we look at affordable or attainable housing, that typically is running a two- or three-bedroom home, and families are bigger than that, right? And have different needs, and some people are working from home. So we've found that there's a real soft spot in the market for a four- or five-bedroom home, and we're delivering that in this particular community. Our average pricing is in the mid 300s here. We started this project at $296 and are currently still at 300 to right under 400, so $399 is kind of our target price point for that range. You know, the big key in this, as you've heard today, is the land cost and development cost in doing this. The operational efficiencies that we have with how we intend to build and value engineering the plans, it's not through the same quality level and consistency and beauty that you would see in a Neal community. You'll see that in all of our communities. And so it's not done by necessarily specking down the community, it's done by consistency, it's done by SKU rationalization. There's no need to buy 15 different window types, buy five different window types, and they're still windows, right? And so our buyer, we found, they just don't care about some of those things that other buyers do care about, and we're just delivering where they need to be, which is based on a price and a payment, and we'll get into that a little bit more. Here are two of the plans. One of the, one of the deals with Charlene and Pat was that we were not going to do this if the houses don't look pretty. So if you know the two of them, you'll know that that was a firm stance upon hire, was we're going to do it, but we're not going to make it look like the others that do this. And so you'll find that the elevation and the streetscape of the community is really cute, pretty, and the designs of the floor plans, I've worked in Florida, Georgia, Texas, Tennessee, and we've done this in large scale, and we know what configurations work. These plans are well thought through as far as what they offer for each buyer profile, and it doesn't just target one buyer, it targets a variety of buyers, and we'll get into what we're seeing in our first community as far as buyers are concerned. We are actively working on a townhome project and product that would deliver, as you know, to get a single-family house on a lot below 300 is very difficult to do. And so in order to get in the 200 mark, our plan is to develop a townhome product that can do that. This townhome product would have two bedrooms and three-bedroom configurations, two-car garage, one-car garage. When you look at this floor plan, the two in the middle are the same floor plan, and the two on the end are the same floor plan. So it follows the same strategy as the single-family approach, but it's thought through well, and from a design standpoint and aesthetics, it's going to look really good. This is our preliminary plan for the site. It's currently yielding 106 single-family units on the site. This site could be planned in a different way, where we incorporated townhomes, if we could get the right land use and zoning for that, and that's an option. But this, we wanted to show today a single-family option, which is what we're actively building today and what we have product to show on the ground. So we feel like we can execute on this plan from beginning to end, so we would develop the site, get, you know, obtain the proper zoning with your blessing, and we'd move forward with the project in a fast manner. The project that I showed before was still, wasn't mass graded this time last year, and we have 52 homes under production. We've got 17 homes presold before grand opening. Of the 17 homes that we've sold, only four of them were not a first-time home buyer. And the four that weren't were active adult move-down buyers that wanted an affordable option. So in all cases, every sale for the first project went to somebody who was entering the market, either for the first time or didn't have an affordable option as a move-down buyer. And the moved-down buyer being somebody who's been there, done that, and wanted an option that was affordable for retirement. The ask today is to be able to partner with the school board, to be able to deliver an attainable house price. The two challenges that I see when I meet with the buyers that come through our doors is down payment, right? Can they come up with the appropriate amount of down payment to buy the home based on the sales price? And then the other is overall payment based on the interest rates that are out there today. So there are state programs that are available, and some of our buyers are using those state programs for down payment assistance. Some are repayable, some are not. So we're seeing that that's an option for the buyers. You know, Ivory, I'd like you to talk a little bit about the Pat and Charlene Foundation, that's an option for us as well, if you want to go ahead.
Sure. So Pat and Charlene started a foundation. Their philanthropic goals are to help in the business that they know, which is homeownership. And so they are willing to also have grants available for their down payments. We had a property, we have a property in downtown Sarasota, it's across from Booker High School. And our initial goal was to see if we could get teachers from Booker to be able to live close to where they were teaching. And the issue that we were running into is they couldn't qualify for their mortgages, and a lot of them didn't have the down payment. They may pay the same amount in mortgage for their rent, but they didn't have the money upfront to qualify for their mortgage. And so the things that we're seeing is, if we can have some type of, whether we need to educate some of the buyers, the teachers, as to what state and local grants are available to help them in that process, that would help us. Because we really wanted to see teachers be able to have a home and be able to, you know, walk across the street and go to the school that they are teaching at, instead of driving sometimes an hour to get there. But it's just hard, and a lot of the teachers didn't really know about these options. And so part of what we want to do is help provide some of that information, and Pat and Charlene also have that option if it was something that we would want to do in a partnership, so.
Ivory mentioned education. For a lot of the buyers that come through the door, they often don't know if they can afford to buy a home. They don't know what it takes to buy a home. So the education process, which we can provide in our sales office and help those potential buyers through and understand what it takes. And sometimes it's going through a little bit of remediation, right? Like you've got to sell, you know, we have all scenarios, but one's got to sell a motorcycle, and they've got to, you know, open some credit cards and do different things to be able to build their credit and get their down payment. And if they do those things, they'll be able to afford a home, and they just don't know that that was an option, and maybe didn't have the guidance on how to spend their money, how to save their money. So there's a lot of coaching and education that can be done to help our teachers. The average income for a teacher, I'm married to a teacher in Manatee County, and I know firsthand that that income level is challenging for a single person to buy a home at these price points. So it's going to take some assistance and guidance and help from different avenues, and so that's one of the things that we just want to be transparent about. Our townhome project gets a little closer to that price point, where maybe a teacher that's single could afford that price. But once you start getting into 300 range, based on those bands and the interest rates the way they are, it's challenging. And so, but that's the reality of our current situation, and we feel like we have an opportunity with this site to be able to deliver that. And we want to stay within the confines of fair housing rules and regulations and laws, and, but if there's a path to do that, we want to do that. And I want to encourage everyone on the board to come take a look at our first community and parish. It's, all of our communities are in A locations. We're not delivering a B or C location or inferior location to do this. This first project, to the right of it is Pat's Kanu Creek, which is, you know, 600 to a million-dollar house. And to the left of it is Medallion, doing, you know, 600,000 to 800,000 right next door. And in between that is 300, 350,000 average price point. So they're in an A location, and we're delivering that on our own. We'd love a partnership with the school board to be able to do that at a bigger scale. And then the biggest thing is, for us, is this, if this is not the opportunity, what is the opportunity? And if there's a different path to achieve it with the site that you'd like to see, we'd love to present that. We've got a lot of flexibility with being a privately held company, and I'm sure you guys know the volume that we can build and the resources that we have. We can deliver on the site, we can deliver on time, we can deliver within budget, and we can deliver the prices that we've mentioned with your support. Thank you for your time, and let us know if you have any questions.
I just want to say I like very much the townhome that you have in your sites. That meets dream criteria, I'm sure, for many public servant workers, and teachers in particular, and gives the opportunity to build equity, which is part of the dream of homeownership. Mr. Edwards?
Just to get started also, I think it's fair to say that Pat and Charlene are big advocates of public education. I'm not sure everybody knows, and the public knows, that they were big contributors to the Trades Academy at Riverview, and they're very involved at the Trades Academy in Venice to this day, which I'm very appreciative of. And they also, their Christmas card is in partnership with, I believe it's Booker Middle?
Elementa.
Elementa, M-E.
So every year, we partner with a different school, and we create that, and whatever artwork they do, we use as our Christmas card.
And Pat and I have had a couple of discussions, and we don't agree on a lot, but what we do agree on is public education. And I think it's important in this conversation to acknowledge Neal Communities and their generosity to public education. So I just wanted to say that. And one of the things that I really did enjoy talking about in the other presentation, where I think there's a collaboration here, is, and Mr. Connor and I talked a little bit about this yesterday, but there's a, to me, when I built businesses, the number one asset that I had were my employees. And the best care that we could provide for employees allows for recruitment and retention. So that when I look at affordable rental to attract entry-level folks getting into our school district, but then creating a very robust EAP, an employee assistant program, that would include how to afford your first home, and a transition through that process, I think is a huge opportunity for recruitment and retention. And that's what I was excited to hear my fellow colleagues asking about, how can we get them into homeownership? And I think there's a collaboration here that we haven't yet zeroed in on, but can figure out how to make that happen. And that is the key to attracting and retaining the best employees, which gets back to public education and maintaining our property values. So I share that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yeah, no, I would echo that. I think that, you know, again, putting the hat on, in the board, school board realm is kind of hard, but I think that with partnerships and such, I think of like Tunnel for Towers or what have you, and how they creates opportunities, and they have entire communities, I think, in Florida now. But creating an opportunity for teachers, we want more people to go into that profession anyhow. And so if there's a longer vision and idea, again, if it's a foundation that has more of that role when we're talking about the funding, because the gap to get the down payment is, it's it. I mean, that's, I mean, that's the challenge. So I think that has to be, and I don't know that that's in our purview, but I think brainstorming or talking to various partnerships that would make sense, because going down this path, that would be a very high hurdle. And I think even when we're talking about renting, you know, is that a long-term goal? Yes, it's accessible, I think you brought up a good point, and I think it was responded to with the, you know, the scale and the efficiencies. But what's our long-term plan? And I think it all comes down to recruitment and retention, and retention being that piece. If we're able to find some way through our brainstorming and partnering with other, you know, companies and other foundations, that we are able to help fulfill that opportunity of homeownership, then I think there's a great opportunity there. I mean, I think of, it's childcare and being able to afford a home. Those are the two things that we need to be talking about all the time.
And you throw in childcare.
Well, I think of like how PGT, they had one onsite, and I thought it was brilliant, because that's a huge challenge. So, I mean, childcare and affordability of homes, that's it. We gotta, then we can bring in all sorts of people.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
And I'll just echo what Mr. Edwards said. I know Mr. and Mrs. Neal, they care very much, as everybody does, about public education, and so I appreciate it very much.
And Mrs. Matthews, when do you think that you'll have a model with the townhomes? I see the townhomes as extraordinarily, you know, just moving in that feasibility category from multiple points, but yet beautiful with great pride.
Yeah, so we're working with, through an ITN with Manatee County for a property off Alina Road, which is what the product was designed for. And then we've got another project off of Burnstall Road further south that we would be planning this project for. But currently in Manatee, Sarasota County, we don't have a site that is ready for that, designed for that. We will try to mix that in with our larger projects to be able to offer a pod within a community and make it more mixed-use with single-family. So that's in our future. And, you know, we're excited to share the floor plans. They're going through, you know, we consider them 80% concept complete, and so they're pretty far along, and we're committed to doing them as soon as we have them. And the other site that Ivory mentioned is we've got seven lots by Booker High School that we've taken down condemned housing, and we're going to be excited to show what we can do in an infill application, which is very different and not necessarily our day-to-day business, but one of the things we wanted to do to find out, can we do this in scale, and can we deliver it for our teachers? And so we'll know really soon, you know, if it can work in an infill application.
So in terms of perpetuity, you know, you've got the homeowner, you know, a teacher buys it the first time, they sell the home. Is there any type of arrangement or partnership, or is it, you know, once that house goes for sale, then it's open to anyone, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's open to anyone. Some of the programs that are available through the state require at, when you sell the product back, you have to repay if you got down payment assistance or a loan for that, or interest-free loan. You have to repay that as a first mortgage or a second mortgage on that house. So there's, you know, there's a lot of different programs. But yeah, I think, you know, we'd have to work through how, you know, if But yeah, I think, you know, we'd have to work through how, you know, if the school board has interest in maintaining some rights to the community, how do we, how do we structure that? How do we do that legally?
Okay.
Yeah.
And in terms of the Indian Hills property, the way it looks is that would probably, you would end up purchasing that property for us for some, at some value, right?
Yeah, yeah. And it really depends what price we want to deliver, right? If we purchased it, it's all a math equation. So if we purchased it at a price and then we put our hard cost on it, what, you know, what could we deliver? We know that we can purchase land and deliver mid-300s because we did it in Broadleaf. So that's a baseline for that. So we have an idea of what we could pay for that property and deliver that price. And the less we pay for it, the less the price could be, right? So, and so that's really what we're up against. The site, as you've heard from others, has a lot of wetlands and is an interesting land plan. And we would have to, you know, as we go, you know, I think Town Homes, if we're trying to increase the yield, is going to be a really good part of that equation. And it could offer a variety within the community and different, you know, stat, what we've seen in the master plan communities is people like to be mixed together. Like we try to segment the buyer profiles, but that's not necessarily what the buyer profile is looking for. They, in our communities, they want to be mixed. And we had a lady who's 52 years old and a first-time home buyer at 52, worked her whole, you know, life, and this is the first time she could afford a home, which was just kind of wild to me to be able to, you know, in tears, happy tears, buying this home, but just to think that she's went so long renting and at 52 years with a good job, but just not at a threshold or believing that she could buy a home in these two counties, Sarasota, Manatee County. And so we were able to deliver that, and that's exciting. And you got that spectrum, and then you have the other spectrum of, you know, daughter living with parents in Canoe Creek in one of a Neo Community projects, and able to move right next door to the parents and buy a home and live on their own. And so we just see so many different sides of the story, and it's encouraging for this product.
It's amazing for teachers graduating with the bachelor's, let alone masters, and the first reconciliation is you can't afford the rent, let alone buy a house, and you've spent all of that, you know, time focusing on a profession. And I'm not just, you know, singling out educators, but it's a phenomenon that I think we're at the point we're looking at. Let's see where we fit in.
I have a question for Jody, but it's not, it's just, it's about properties since we have this, because we were talking about, what other large parcels of land do we have that are not predetermined, if at all? Is this the only one?
Yeah, so in terms of properties that we have purchased and are kind of in our inventory or in the process of purchasing, all of those, other than this one, are slated for growth at this particular point.
Okay.
So we don't have anything currently sitting there that would be, unless the board wanted to make some changes, that we don't have planned for something that would accommodate growth either in Northport, in North County, or potentially something coming in mid-county.
Okay.
Again, those are all kind of wrapped, integrated in the development that's going on and as part of the development agreements with the developers of those areas.
And I don't know that this property would be appropriate, but one of the things, and again, this is probably for follow-up conversation, I don't want to, I know we're on time and not necessarily on the agenda, but we've talked about the landings, and this property is such a, it's right by the water. Have we evaluated selling that and then moving our administration building more centrally located and all of those? So I don't know how that plays into all of that, but I know that had been discussed. I don't know if we have discussed it collectively as a board, but it might be something worthwhile to bring up.
Well, and I'd like to, you know, just as a consensus with that, if there are other board members, I would like to see a study of what are all our options. I think that if we're going to fact-find and look at where we might fit in and benefit recruiting, retaining, and so forth, that what do we have? What are all the variables? And what comes to mind with you bringing that up, Mrs. Ziegler, is the land that we do have that's slated for growth, has there ever been a model where there is housing? I know that, you know, my school resource officers had mobile homes on our property, but are any of our properties feasible? And has that ever occurred where there is housing on the property? Just what are all the options? And if we're looking at this, I don't want to be narrow-minded of, and, you know, the potential is we would land right back where we are right now, but for me, I like to peel away all the layers before we land somewhere.
Sure. So start off, yeah, to start off with your comment, Ms. Ziegler, Superintendent Connor has had us do a bunch of work kind of behind the scenes in terms of this property you're sitting in now. So, yeah, we're prepared to have those conversations about value and what we could potentially do with relocation. But we've got this property in play, obviously the Indian Hills property is in play. And then certainly on all of our green sites, as we're going through design, that's when you'd want to think about, okay, do we need to utilize the whole site? I know when the planning department works with developers, we try to get something that's high and dry, and that's always a conversation about usable acreage on the site. But certainly we could have that conversation, we could lay out all of our green sites. Certainly Ms. Conati and the planning department know what's coming in terms of the future development. And so, yeah, if you want to look at it comprehensively, certainly could have that conversation guided by the superintendent.
That would be something I'd be interested in if my fellow board members.
I would be interested in that as well, particularly the projections of growth of all of our current properties and how large they are, and what does that, you know, what are the probabilities there? I think Mr. Edwards, and then Ms. Marinelli.
I like the conversation, but I'm not sure these guys have to sit and hang out. But I do have some comments, but if we wanted to allow them, unless we had questions.
Is there any further comments for Neo Communities?
If they want to hear it. If they want to hear what we're talking about with land.
Yes, thank you guys so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation. One of the conversations that I was involved in was around, and it was a discussion, and I think it's valid to put all the options on the table, as you mentioned. When, one of the conversations that I was involved in was there are 13 acres at Garden Elementary that kind of sit there, and when you talk about childcare, Garden Elementary is completely across the street from the Y. There's all kinds of options, it's centrally located. And one of the ideas that came out of those kinds of conversations was that those 13 acres could have been a pilot program for affordable, attainable housing, because you have its scale and just to sort of try it out. There are other locations where we have school sites that have acreage available that would have to go through the same kind of zoning process that Indian Hills would have to go through. But I think that one of the, I keep mentioning a pilot program, that is, to me, an option for the board to consider. It gives us an opportunity to just try it out and see if this really does work, and then we can scale it however big and large we would want it. So I use that to bring to Mr. Dumas's attention, to let us know what other school sites might have those capabilities. That's number one. Number two, in terms of the 40 acres, and again, I had this conversation with Mr. Connor yesterday, although it doesn't require, it can't be a school right now, one of my big concerns is, I know we're talking about putting a building at STC Northport, but once we do that, there's nothing available for continuing education, and we're pretty maxed out already. So when that, so can that 40 acres, if we're looking into the future, if we're trying to keep public education competitive, could that be another continuing education STC campus? I don't know the answer, but because it's already worth $6.5 million, and that was in 2022, God forbid we hit financial concerns, whether it be through a disaster or, you know, we have challenges with charter schools and expansion and contraction. And if we hit a financial hurdle, that's a substantial amount of money that we have in that asset that I'd hate to see us just at the onset. And I can be convinced otherwise, I'm just saying, but it's part of the discussion is really what I'm really getting at. So if Mr. Dumas would perhaps talk to us about what other school sites might have a sizable acreage that a pilot program could be created.
Ms. Marinelli, please.
And to add to that, like we were talking about that 40 acres, because there's so many wetlands, and you've got one that's wooded, what, with the other properties, what are the barriers and how much would it cost if we were going to build? Because all those factors, because if you take any wetland, you got to come up with an alternative. So it's not going to be cheap to build what we would possibly need. So to put, when you look at all those properties, can you put the, like, the pros and the cons of kind of building, or what we're looking at?
Sure. I think we could absolutely go through kind of all the properties we kind of have that are vacant currently, that are coming into the mix as we work with developers, we could take a look at all that. And then what do we have in the current inventory that would have enough property to put some kind of a pilot program on, work with the superintendent to make sure he was comfortable with that, and then define, okay, here's what we think are the pros, here's what we think are the cons to this particular property. So we start to do that.
Because it's very different what you can build a school versus homes. So that all has to be taken in, in my mind, has to be taken into consideration, because it might be much more financially feasible for us if that property is turned over to a developer, because they can do more that schools cannot. I mean, if you've got, you know, the higher-ups telling us how much square footage can be in an art room, you can imagine, people don't understand that we are really bound by certain limitations of what you can do to build a facility, a school.
Yeah, and I think once you get into the conversation about on a school property, there's a whole host of other variables. You start talking about, you know, safety and security, liability, zoning, you know, we typically can do what we want on our properties, we're zoned for governmental use typically. We promote our own buildings and things of that nature, gets a little bit more complicated when you start talking about homes. And so those are all the conversations we're going to have to have if we don't use a fully green site, where we can kind of just change the zoning and things of that nature. So we can start to take a look at all that, but those will be some of the intricacies we'll have to explore as we start to look at other options.
Well, I think it's feasible to, to rule things out for us as a board that we're asking for. Good point, Ms. Marinelli, that, you know, we're not taking the human capital of your staff and having you go down a road that is not worthwhile in the end, just to show us that it can't be done. I think that we need to simplify, but yet at the same time educate ourselves. The other piece I was thinking of as well, whether it's in the council of government and monthly meeting, or it is your staff, you and your staff, what can we learn from the county that's ventured in this arena, or the city, or other, the municipalities? What have been their a-hus, successes, challenges? I just think that, and again, I don't want to take the human capital as one board member of our educational organization here and go into that business, but how much of that is feasible, given that we're sitting here looking at, you know, where we as a board, with the superintendent's recommendation, might want to go next? I just think where is all that balance that we are being, meeting our fiduciary responsibilities from running, continuing to run a high-quality educational organization to the enormous challenges that have gone on for all the decades of my career, from the time I graduated and I can't even afford rent, let alone buy a house? So.
You have your, there's a lot.
It's a lot.
I just wanted, I am definitely in favor of talking about the landings. We've been, we've brought it up many times, but we haven't just really focused on it. Because, you know, this is an antiquated facility. It's, a person that worked here for 15 years, I know all the patchwork and all the, when you don't even have matching plumbing in the ladies restroom, which some people are like, well, who cares? But, well, you know, it doesn't look too good. But it's costly, and I don't really think it's in our best interest to keep throwing lots and lots of money in a structure that is very outdated. It's full, and this is a prime, prime piece of property.
Well, at least Mr. Dumas got the elevators working.
Oh, I didn't even want to say.
For today, anyway.
So we've grown so much too as a community, and so just the location for our staff in general, this is, it's a hike. I mean, you guys probably agree.
We've talked for years of building it closer to the interstate and more centrally located. So I think it's all part of the land when we talk about what, we need to look at this facility, because just look, I mean, our, the whole computer system, it's just.
Well, we don't need the highest-priced land for our central organization if we can benefit the overall organization. And I know, Mr. Edwards, you are wanting to share.
Yeah, I would, I would, I love the conversation about the landings. I just think it's separate from the attainable housing, workforce housing conversation, in that they may cross over at some point in time. But I would also challenge us as board members, do our own due diligence, not to only rely on Mr. Connor's staff, that I have, I think you know, have spent a fair amount of my own time to make sure I could understand workforce housing and attainable housing, because I so believe in its ability to attract the highest entry-level talent and retain them. So we had some great experts here. I would suggest that we all kind of do get in there, ask a whole bunch of questions, so that when we come back with whatever data and whatever decision we agree on, to send Mr. Connor on, in that we have as much information available at our own fingertips to make quality decisions.
If I may ask a really quick question, are you familiar with any models or anywhere else in the country, since you've been doing research? I just, it helps me look at if there's something, it's a good starting path, so I don't know if you have a suggestion.
I think that my first suggestion would be to get to the Housing Authority, William Russell and
Jack Meredith.
Jack here. And I would start there. That's where I did my work. And then from there, they can give you recommendations of where to look and who to speak to. There's all kinds of financing options that are available. And so when I sit here and say, I like that model because it's no expense to the school district and it's, you know, we donate the land, I'm coming from a place where I have done that research and I've examined those models. If we ask them to do it, and I think we do need to be mindful that we're an educational institution, and that's what we really want to be able to do, but I would start with the Housing Authority. There are people like Matt Sauer, John Thaxton in our community that have been involved in multiple districts locally here in Sarasota and Manatee that can give you recommendations and other places to look. So I don't want you to just take my opinion, go to the community, those are where I would suggest you start.
I wholeheartedly see your point, and I think it is worthy. At the same time, as a board member, I would want to look to some expertise outside of each one of us. And certainly John Thaxton had sent me the previous model that I know you were, had a deep understanding of, so I was able to look at it. But I too look at, as board members, that I would want a recommendation from our experts in that arena. And it's, you know, slow and steady as we look at venturing, if indeed that is the case, outside of the business of education that we have been in. Mr. Enos, is there anything that you would like to add?
And I think that when you look at it in the totality with fiduciary, I think that you have to look at everything to whatever uses our best leverage to be able to assist and to be able to look at our own employees. Because I think it would be, as Mr. Edwards says, if we could know the property, like, I don't even know what we have down there in Osprey, you know, the county at one point, where the sheriff's office had that land in between the two. I heard there's land there that might be available in order to do a pilot, which would be centrally located. I think that when you look at the totality, I think that's a place to start to see what we can. I didn't even realize we had 13 acres of garden, I knew we had some land there, that's pretty significant. So I think if we look at that kind of stuff. So I think if we look at that kind of stuff, whatever's the best that we can do for our, to be able to bring in to make our community better by having the best staff, I think that's obviously a win for everybody. But I think it starts in what do we have available, and then we can limit our choices and then be able to move forward from there to be able to make sure that we're responsible with our land that's been given to us through taxes. I mean, I think that that's, at the end of the day, so, I mean, I think that would be instrumental. And I think the landings does come into it because the last time I heard is like $10 million upgrade to be able to bring us up to standard. And, I mean, there's lots of stuff that I had heard that's going on. But at the end of the day, I think that it all is part of it, but initially, to Mr. Edwards' point, is it is two separate pieces. There's continuity of command here, which is lacking because you can't really, when you have three different buildings and everybody's spread all over the place, it's really kind of hard to have any continuity with it. And then the second place is, is, you know, we're looking at doing something specific to be able to assist and to be able to recruit the best teachers to come here. So I think it is two separate pieces, but we could use as leverage to maybe to get the better for the other piece. So that would be my only comments.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, thank you. I think for me, next steps in hearing the conversation, it's been very productive, and I think it's a good starting point for where we're at today. Since my arrival here, I'm going to look at potentially surveying staff about needs in terms of attainable housing. We've already began conversation and research around the landings and potential sell of the property and what that could look like, and how that could dovetail into opportunities for workforce housing, potentially, depending on who was, who would attain this property. Looking at additional land parcels that we own, whether that's connected to an existing school. I think I do have some reservations around that building on a school site and just, first of all, desirability of those who would want to live there and making sure, because think of the hustle and bustle daily of a school in and out, in and of itself could be problematic. But that is something that I think we should still explore for a pilot. And then looking at other entities like municipalities who have engaged in this work and doing continuous research with the housing authority. So those are my marching orders. We'll continue the conversation and bring back some additional next steps. So thank you.
Thank you all.
May I, you know, what, since it's been brought up and the childcare, I mean, you know, that, we are the second-largest employer, and I know we do have childcare, but I know at Southside, when we offered the childcare before and after, you know, the demand is there. And if that's something we want to look at, too, in the whole big, broad picture, because it is costly, you hear how much it costs a parent. And, you know, I know some of our schools are very limited. I mean, Southside, eight acres, you can't do much there. But some of our others, you know, maybe a joint, but to look at that, because that would be a great thing for our young people. Because, you know, most of them want to have families and they worry about that. But how much, how far do we want to go? I get that as.
No, absolutely.
I do think childcare, since we are the largest, second-largest employer.
I think there is opportunity. Infrastructure is probably the biggest, the overhead, right, for daycare? And there is opportunity within some of our schools that may have some lower enrollment where we could utilize that for daycare purposes, which, again, would be an incentive for our, for our staff.
And when I was at the old building where the alternative school is, where the SEES is program, that it was called, they started a model where it was open to the public. You know, they had, and it was for the babies at Southside. And it was very, very popular and, you know, but then things changed. So I think there's opportunities that maybe we know, and, you know, the technical college, we always had childcare available for the community.
We had partnerships with Sarasota Memorial Hospital at one point as well, because they actually have a childcare facility. And we had students that were doing apprenticeships. I mean, there's a, it's a whole nother arena of study.
I will add, though, because I know we offer this, and it's aftercare, more or less, and where we've talked about it as a benefit to our staff, and I think, I don't, we still do that, correct? Okay, I remember, okay. And I think that was a great first step. There's only so much capacity. And again, this, to me, doesn't, this is a, it's not completely outside our realm because it kind of is a feeder into it, and I think it plays a huge role when it comes to benefit. And I can tell you that there is a real shortage when it comes to childcare in this community. So if we're able to support that, yeah, that would be great. I'd love that.
Don't see any other comment. We are, our schedule's looking great. Sure, we could take a break. 10 minutes sound feasible for everyone? We will return in 10 minutes at 11:02. Thank you. Superintendent Connor, if you'd like to introduce the property insurance renewal agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, annually, we look to renew our property insurance, and today we have Ms. Lynn Peterson, who's going to share some of our options for this upcoming year. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. So we have good news this year, not like last year. This year, these, the rates are stabilizing in the market, so that's good. I don't have the clicker. I can't forward my PowerPoint. Where's it? Is this it? Oh, okay. It looks like something else. All right, so we showed this last year, the history, as you can see, you know, the history of when we were hit by Katrina and our, we reduced our limits. You know, last year, we had to take a significant reduction from the $125 and reduce it to $75 million. So we're back where we, you know, we've built up over the years as we've had good years without any issues and hurricanes, and the market allowed us to keep our $125 million limit and good terms with a $10 million cap on our deductible. But unfortunately, last year, we had to give that up as well as reduce our limit to $75 million. So the goal is to, at some point, as the markets come back and are favorable to us, we want to slowly get up our limit to where we were considering the amount of property that we have. We'll never be able to insure all of our property, obviously, but, you know, that $125 million mark seems to be a good number, considering the cost at any one site. We probably, and hopefully, you know, we never have one site that's fully damaged because of the way that we build our properties to sustain the hurricane and the winds. So with that, as I stated, that the market is better now, we have more capacity, there's the rate stabilization, and this is all leading to allow us to improve our property program. Our values of our statement of values increased because of, we brought up some of our properties to the level needed for the cost per square foot. So we wanted, we needed to bring that up to market, as well as we had property in the open. So, you know, you had your football fields. All of those weren't on our schedule really before, and so with all of that, we added $70 million worth of property in the open. Fortunately for the hurricane Ian claim, we were able to tie those in, the little bit that we had. We didn't have, you know, significant damages. We had some, and so we were able to tie those into the claim. But recognizing the amount of property that we have in the open, we felt it really needed to be added to the schedule. So that, all of that increased our values by 7.54%. And the program will continue with a 5% deductible. As you know, previously, we'd had a 3%, but that has gone away. I don't know if we'll ever see that again, unfortunately, in a $10 million cap. And we'll continue to have the standalone terrorism plan, as well as the equipment breakdown policy, and then the flood policies at Woodlands. So those will all continue. We were able to show three options, much better choices, I think, than, you know, that what we had to deal with last year. This year, you'll see option one, keeping us as-is with our 50% contribution, share. And then option two, we'll have a 30% share. And option three, is my mic on? Okay. And option three, being fully insured, which you all know, that's my choice, but not. But not, may not be the choice of what our budget says. So looking at option one, that would be what we are currently, what we're currently looking at with sharing 50 million, 50% above the 50 million mark. So we would share that 25 million with a carrier. And that cost for that property premium is $6.1 million. So that's, this one, this particular model does show that with this, with us participating, we did have a rate decrease slightly, .54, but overall, the premium increase would be 6.96 for the current, if we stayed as-is. Option two is being able to chip away a little bit at that self-insured at the top layer and only taking on 30% versus the 50%. And that would be $6.4 million for the property alone, just the property premium. And that shows a 12.26% increase, and the rate shows us 4.39. So not a horrible rate. And a slightly higher cost to do that, lessen that share. Yes. And then the third option is being fully insured at that 75 million mark, which in the past, when we had the 125 million above the 75, we would share above the 75 million. So that fully insured option is a 19% increase of 6.8 million. That gets you fully insured, no co-insurance, nothing. And then it makes it a little cleaner with FEMA when you're trying to get recovery for a hurricane, because the FEMA tends to argue a little bit when you have some self-insured at those levels. So that is that, that option. Those are the three options we're presenting. And due to, you know, I had a conversation with Ms. Penner, our CFO, where our budget, you know, would allow. And we were able to come up with that option two. You know, we'd be reducing that by 20%. So we're going to have a 30% self-insured portion at that top layer. And we'd be able to handle that in our budget. Ms. Penner said that she felt like the third option might be a little hard, but me. But, you know, good news on the, we're, just to give you, we'll be getting some income back from the carriers. We're almost, we're almost at the tail end. We are 99% there, finalizing the claim, believe it or not. We are, we had originally gotten a $2 million advance for Ian. We've worked through with just, you know, as we've made repairs and all of the invoices that have come through and the insurance adjuster, and working with the brokers and the consultants and our team. And our team's been wonderful to work with. We've got the facilities. We've got, you know, Don Hampton, Mary Carr. We've got Jane Drager. They've been phenomenal to work with, with getting back money from the insurance company. And it looks like we're probably going to get an additional, I guess, about maybe $3 to $4 million coming in, in the next couple of months. It's going to be sent to the markets. And then, once we have two more pay apps that have to be submitted, and they should come in the next couple of weeks. And then, once those get submitted, the adjuster is able to give it to the markets of the claim. And then they'll scrutinize it a little bit, the insurance companies, and then we'll be able to be looking at something, a check of coming back to us from all of that. So we'll be done with that. And then we'll be working with FEMA to get the monies back from FEMA for everything that wasn't covered. So just, you know, that's, that's coming in too. That'll be coming in in the next couple of months, hopefully. So that's my update. Any questions? And what is your?
Ms. Sigler? Well, I'm happy to see that it's kind of balancing out. I can't remember. Did we, did we adjust our deductible last year?
Yes, it went from five to, it went from three to five, and we lost the $10 million cap.
Even in AOP, all other perils, did we increase it to 100,000? Was it?
Oh, no. Our deductible is the 100,000. The all perils, yeah, it's the hurricane. The wind deductible is the one that we lost.
Okay. No, I knew that. I didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, we did not change the other deductible.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think option, I mean, I would say yes, option two. I don't think we ever, I mean, I don't think we need to, unless you show me a model that shows that we would need to be, the risk factors to be fully insured. I just think, I know it feels better.
Yeah, well, I mean, it feels better because it's, it's where we were.
Yeah.
We were at that level.
Right.
And then we had 125 million total coverage.
Right.
And then we shared at that top level.
Yeah.
Above 75 million.
Right, right, right. No, I mean, but I think even the way we have it listed out, again, God forbid you have a total loss on one location, but that's, like, statistically rare.
We don't want to talk about that.
But, all right, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I've become bilingual in Lynn Peterson. It's usually option two. The question that I have, though, is when, when we do these kinds of comparisons, I think it also is helpful to kind of look at all of our silos, if possible, as a side-by-side comparison. I know we took a 20% hit last year on healthcare. And so I was just, I think, for my purposes, is that when you give me the budget book and I have to go through page by page, you guys do that for a living. I have to dig into it. So getting a broader picture of what the other silos and what those costs might look like as well. How does healthcare look for us this coming year?
So, good question. Good question.
You want to move over? Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Yes, so we just had a health insurance committee meeting, or benefit committee meeting, yesterday. And I had tasked Aon with doing very preliminary projections for the '25 year, because that's a calendar year for the benefits. And we are looking right now at 11.9% increase. Unfortunately, gone are the days of those nice low 4, 3, 4% increases due to medical trend increase from 5 to pretty much 8% now. So we're looking at higher cost and trend. And unfortunately, we've had two high-cost claimants that, you know, put us over for the '23 year compared to '22. So we're there. And then some of our pharmacy. Pharmacy is significantly increased. It's trending very high at 15%. So we're looking at about close to 12% for that.
So from, again, from my perspective, having those kinds of things side-by-side, because as much as we would like to keep doing what we're doing and be on these trends, sometimes we're just not going to be able to afford it if we know that there are three hits that we're going to have to take. Or last year, we, it was big in healthcare, and we absorbed that. So I, I still am sticking with option two, even though you gave us that, that information. But I think as we grow larger and we're looking at budgets, and I know we want to put chips on the table for pre-K and dual language, I mean, there's a lot of things that, that we're trying to advance, is that some of these kinds of costs, I think, not that we're trying to be stingy, but I just think there's a bigger picture that you all get to see every day, that as individual board members, we get in silos.
Well, because of the renewals and when they hit, it's hard for us to get those numbers. You know, there's multiple carriers on our plan. So once this goes out to market, which we're a May 1 renewal, by the time we get everything packaged up, usually by January, we're sending it out to the market. And then by the time it actually gets back, it's early March. So we're on different times.
I get that. I just, it was just like even that projection of 11%, that maybe it'll be nine. I get that. But I just think it's helpful, even from a projection standpoint, at least as an individual board member, that's helpful for me when I'm looking at the big picture. That was one of the challenges, I think, the board had last time, before Mr. Connor got here. We had all these presentations of things that might be good ideas, but we couldn't afford all of them. We had to make good decisions.
Right, absolutely. I'm open to any suggestions. And certainly, if you want me here more often, I can certainly do that, too.
I do have a question if there's, when it looks, because I think of our healthcare and our property and casualty, two separate veins, but they're all out of our budget, I suppose, I sort of understand that. But when it, so the 11.9 heads-up is helpful.
Well, and I saw everything trending higher, and I knew that I wanted to get that in front of leadership. I've actually told my direct leadership that things weren't looking so good, because I had, you know, those concerns. I mean, you know, it's always personal to me, because it's what I oversee. So I have previously given the heads-up, you know, about a month ago. And then, just because I didn't want a shock to the, I didn't want the board to be completely surprised in August when I come in front of you with all of the self-insured update that, where did this come from? We never heard this. So that is why I have provided leadership with that information and then did very early projections to get an idea of where we, where we were going to possibly land.
Gotcha. But question on, so I know the property renewal is in May, but we have a lot of other, I mean, we have, I'm not sure I know from general liability, but, and then we have cyber. What other?
Yes, we, the larger one is the legal, the law enforcement liability.
Okay.
That runs about in the 60s. So there's nothing, this is your biggest bill here. All the others are under the 50,000, you know.
Even the cyber?
Yes.
Ooh. All right.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
And they're all a July 1 renewal. So they all come, and the only one that comes to the board because it's under, you know, it's over the 50, is the legal, I always say legal, but it's law enforcement.
Yeah.
And it's possible that cyber could go up, and it could come in front of you. But I won't know that for a couple of months.
And we, and we, I know, stop, I promise. We pay, who's our broker?
It's Gallagher.
And we put on a fee?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's a flat.
Flat, okay.
Mr. Enos, anything you'd like to add? Ms. Marinelli, Superintendent Connor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Option two.
So we are moving on to policy updates and revisions. Superintendent Connor, if you'd like to introduce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we do have three new policies that we'll be presenting to you today for consideration. And I was requested, it was requested that we take a look at our public comment portion of our policy for board meetings. And so we'll spend some additional time after those three new policies discussing our public comment. Mr. Porento, take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent. And as the superintendent said, we do have a few different policies here, just to go over, that are going to protect us as we move forward in certain areas. And the first one is policy 9.40. This is the advertising and commercial activities policy. We had actually brought this policy to the board previously, but as we looked at it afterwards, we, we wanted to add something in talking with Mr. Miniglia and the communications department that would allow the district's central office publications, like newsletters, programs, flyers, and things like that, to accept paid advertising, similar to what we allow at the school level. And any of this advertising would need the approval of the superintendent or someone that he designates in that role to make sure that it's appropriate and consistent with the educational objectives of the district. And the policy would state that those payments that are, that are made for that advertising can be used by the cost center that receives them and spent, subject to current board policy, state law, and Department of Education rules. The next policy is 7.85. This is a new policy covering online educational service agreements and contracts. We worked very closely with Mr. Benzwanger in IT on this to make sure that we were able to provide the guidelines that are needed for contracts, for data collection, and for personal information protection. This policy outlines the rules and responsibilities for reviewing those services agreements and the items that are needed to be included in those agreements. And it also defines the requirements for informing when personally identifiable information can be collected, how it will be used, and when it will be destroyed. Third policy is another new policy, 6.271. This is staff and student communication. And this new policy is intended to provide guidelines on approved communications between staff and students that would align with the two-way communication tool that is going to be made available through the new website, which is in progress right now. This policy would define acceptable use of communications between staff, including athletic coaches, and students, as well as prohibited types of communication. It includes that all district communication is subject to public records laws and must be produced upon request. And it outlines how the district's new website and the communication tool within it does retain those records, which is why that is the recommended tool for use for staff members as they're communicating one-on-one with students.
I just want to add, I'm really glad we add, I'm very glad we've added this. I know we've talked about, we had a sample policy that I'd brought forward before, which this is a little bit different, but it was addressing some of the concerns where there's some clarification on communication. So this is great. Thank you.
And I'll just add that the retention of documents is in real time, so that there's no ability, if you use this tool, to delete them, you know, so, which I think is a useful tool for the district moving forward with our obligation to retain records.
And, and should this policy eventually be formally adopted, we've already worked with the communications department, with IT, and with Mr. Slaton in athletics, to make sure that we are very effectively, especially the athletic coaches, able to communicate this out. But we'll obviously get this information to principals, and so that they can communicate that with their staffs and be trained on how to use the new website and the communication tool that's embedded within it. So as the superintendent mentioned, we did work on drafting a few different options or versions of public comment policies. And I'd like to just provide a little bit of an overview of each of those policies and then allow you all to carry the discussion. And we'll make notes and things like that, to try to come to some sort of consensus. Each of these options is similar, but does have some, some differences within them of how things would go. And when we started this, we did take a look at what other different local governing boards are doing throughout the county with, with their public comments. So as you'll see here, the Sarasota County Commission limits it to three minutes per speaker. They have agenda comments first, then they go with up to five speakers on items not on the agenda. And then any other speakers after that five are allowed time at the end of the meeting to provide their comments. So they don't limit general comments to five speakers only. That's just what they allow prior to taking up their agenda. The City of Sarasota allows up to three minutes per speaker. They provide 30 minutes of comment related to the agenda items at the start of the meeting. And then they have a second period at the end of the meeting. But they do allow public comment on each agenda item, as those agenda items go before the board for vote. City of Northport, also up to three minutes per speaker. They allow general public comment at the start of the meeting and public comment on each agenda item prior to each vote. each agenda item prior to each vote. The City of Venice allows up to five minutes per resident or per property or business owner within the city, and then up to two minutes for others per public comment. They provide one hour of public comment at the start of the meeting and remaining speakers at the end of the meeting with the same time restriction of that five minutes and three minutes. Town of Longboat Key allows up to three minutes, public comment at the start for items not on the agenda, and public comment for each agenda item prior to vote. The Airport Authority allows up to five minutes per speaker with public comment on agenda items at the start of the meeting, and public comment for items not on the agenda at the end of the meeting. Sarasota Memorial Hospital allows three minutes per speaker, and that is after the consent agenda. So with the policies that we've put together, our current board policy is Policy 2.22, and there would be a minor change to that policy where it currently has a little bit of information about public comment to just reference that a new policy that covers public comment policy and procedures has been taken up by the board and implemented. So version one of this, and like I said, most of the items on these four different versions are going to be the same, but there are four for you guys to each take a look at and let us know any thoughts or any guidance or direction you have on these. Version one, the structure of public comment is unchanged from how the public comment period is currently implemented, but some of those items that strengthen the meeting just kind of outline more statutorily at the start of the meeting what public comment entails, what the authority of the board to regulate public comment is. There is that public comment rules, which is Item B. Item C is disruptive speech, which provides the board chair the authority to warn speakers to order the meeting to recess, to order the removal of any person interfering with the process of the meeting in accordance with statute, and then to order the board meeting room to be cleared of audience members if continued interruptions or disruptions to the orderly process of the board meeting continue. It also adds Section D, which we didn't currently have within our policy, which is the ADA compliance aspect, that if there is somebody who needs accommodations for the meeting, they need to request that in writing 48 hours prior to the meeting so that we can ensure that those accommodations are met. If those accommodations are requested shorter than 48 hours before the meeting, the district will still do everything within its power to make sure that we are able to accommodate those requests. But this is straight out of Florida statute that we just didn't have within our policy previously, and somebody may not have known that they needed to let us know 48 hours in advance. So we wanted to make sure that we did have that covered in here.
So what's the difference on version one than what we have right now?
All it does is add those additional items to really strengthen the policy and outline more statutorily the authority of the board and requirements.
Got it.
The second version, version two, includes Item B.3, which public comment speaking time would be determined by the number of speakers with no specific limit on how long the entire public comment period would last. So this public comment period would be for agenda items or general public comments, and the recommendation is one to 25 speakers. Everybody would get three minutes, 26 to 52 minutes, 51 or more speakers, one minute, and that the public comment time, again, could be used for agenda items or general business of the board or the district. There are other districts in the state that do, do this type of public comment. They have different boundaries for what that threshold is for three minutes, two minutes, or one minute, but we did want to provide this as an option. Version three would have a time limit on the public comment period, which public comment period would be 90 minutes or a different time determined by the board, and that speaking time would be determined evenly for each speaker, not to exceed three minutes per speaker within that period of time. And that public comment time could be used for comment on agenda items or general business of the board. And again, in each of these three versions that we've just discussed, this public comment period, because it can be on agenda items or on general items, it would be prior to the board taking a vote on anything at the start of the meeting.
Where is that on version two?
In Section B.2.
Does it always be three?
Which portion, Mr. Evans?
The time period on version three, the time period is.
Is it B.2? Our slide says B.2.
B.2, the public comment period of the board meeting shall be scheduled for 90 minutes. Speaking time for each individual addressing the board will be divided evenly for each speaker, not to exceed three minutes per speaker? Or were you asking about when the, the portion of the meeting that included it? Okay. And then version four would be a split period of public comment, and in A.1, it states that, that public comment will be two portions, agenda comments or comments on agenda items at the start of the meeting, and general comments on non-agenda items or other business of the board and district at the end of the meeting. Public comment speaking time will be determined by the total number of speaker cards with no specifically determined time limit on how long that period could last. Again, that one to 25 speaker cards, three minutes, 26 to 52 minutes, and then 51 or more, one minute each. And then for that period, any member of the public would have one period of time to speak on however many agenda items they had of interest to them to speak of. You wouldn't get an additional opportunity if you had five different items you wished to speak about. Item B.2, speakers would get, again, one period on those comments, and an individual speaker would be allowed to speak on agenda comments at the beginning of the meeting, and again, if they wished, in the second period of public comment, to provide general comments about the, the district to the board. So that would, that would have to be allowed, that somebody could speak in both of those periods of comment. So those are the four options that we have drafted. Again, I'm not here to make any recommendation on any of these. This is, this is the board's policy, so any, any comments, any thoughts, any feedback, any, any requests of things to add, to remove, to change, we're, we're happy to hear them. And I know Mr. Duggan has taken a look at these, and we, we do have the statutes here as well, just to make sure that everything that we are doing is in compliance with public records or public meeting laws and public comment periods.
Don't everyone speak at once? Ms. Marinelli, or Ms.?
Without commenting, in reference to number two, number, and Item 7, I think it's A., subsection 7, about signs, does, are you aware of any other meetings that allow, that they can carry in signs? I know it says here, it used to be with ours, is we didn't let anybody, if they had a sign with a stick on it, because a stick abuses a weapon. Do you know of any other, the commission meetings or the council meetings that allow them to actually bring in signs?
I'm not aware if they have any different restrictions than we have, other than that this, this line is straight out of our current policy.
Yeah, I understand that. So that would be one thing I would want to have clarification, because I could just say that, you know, let's say we had something for, something as a, like Planned Parenthood wanted to come. There would be something that you wouldn't necessarily want to be able to have people that have photographs. If you follow what I'm saying, it could be anything. It could be any, any particular hate group that would want to come in that they could have, or specific hate speech where they wouldn't consider it disruptive, and then who is making determination, if they came in with something and who was? So I guess my question, I would want to have follow-up just on the signs piece, because I just think that, you know, if, if everybody is allowing it, that that's great. I have no issues, but I just know that it can be obviously extended to other organizations that people would potentially find offensive, that if they brought something in. So at this point, I, you know, I would see if anyone else has that. I understand that's what our policy says, but it's, you know, is that current to what is allowable as a general rule?
Best practices across multiple organizations, you're looking for input on their practices with allowing signs or any restrictions thereof. I think that's a good idea, that we expand our knowledge of what's going on in governmental meetings.
Well, and there are, there are some First Amendment concerns. A sign can be a form of speech under the First Amendment, and not to get into the complete legal weeds, but I think the issue is you can, in a forum like this, a school board meeting, a governmental meeting is what's known as a limited public forum, so you have the ability to have time, place, and manner restrictions. So to me, a ban outright on signs is probably going too far. I think having a size limit, a content, you know, limit, consistent with our policies, abusive, discriminatory, profane, those type of thing, and in policy, which is called facial compliance, and then in practice, making sure we monitor it with consistency, that type of thing, I think is probably the best practice in that area.
Well, I know that we have that you can't, if, I believe, that I understand that we have that you can't block anyone else's view, but the practice in our board room when signs are brought in is that they're popping those up at any given time, which indeed does that. But, you know, where's the judgment calls there and or not?
No, no.
That, that's what's been brought to my attention by people in the community, that when all these signs go up, it most definitely blocks the view of the person behind them. So we have it right here, that you can't block it, but then it's like we don't want to hinder anybody's, you know.
Yeah, I think that strikes the.
I think we're, it's a catch-22. It, it, it kind of, to me, is like, makes no sense, because when you hold up a sign, you're going to block somebody's view.
Sure, and I think really the issue is, so people in the audience have the ability to participate by listening and attending, just as much as people holding up a sign to, and balancing those two competing interests, I think is important, and having a regulation that kind of addresses that. But really, the issue is, is it disrupting individuals from participating more than just seeing? But, you know, I think we would want to be able to demonstrate a measurable disruption if we're going to rein that.
Well, I think quite honestly, the way things are going, it's whatever, whoever's political view is going to think, no, I have a right to do this, and the opposite's going to be, you're blocking my view and you're disrupting my participation, so.
And maybe it's people with signs sitting in the back and people without signs sitting in the front to ensure that they're not being blocked.
We've got something in here you kind of can't really enforce.
I don't think it's an infringement on First Amendment because of the time, because as you mentioned, it's a limited public forum, and so there are, there are realms in which we can afford, it's the consistency piece, no matter where we're at, right? That's what, that's when we get dicey, but you can certainly have limitations on the length of time, as we're discussing, and on the, you know, structure, as we said. It's giving a reasonable opportunity for the public to weigh in on items that are being action items and also voicing other concerns. If you go to, and I, so I like, I'd like to know what other local entities do. I can tell you at this, in the State House, you're not allowed to wear, you can't even wear shirts that have something on it from a, from a standpoint, because it can be, you know, for the decorum of the chambers, and also it can be disruptive, but signs are absolutely not allowed. So for that reason, I think we'd be able to, but I'd be, I'm curious what local, other local governments do. I think it's a good, it's a good, because there's a lot of things that Tallahassee does that we can't do, so, so for that reason, but I think we'd be able to pass that.
And just follow up on that, it's not necessarily in reference to, you know, obviously I've been First Amendment advocate, because it must have been my whole entire career. The bottom line is, is that I'm just looking at it as if we're looking at the policy as something that may end up going down, that we may have somebody, because I understand the signs that have come in. I mean, it's, it, at the end of the day, people have the rights to the First Amendment, period, whatever they want, you know, within the legality. I just worry that at some point, it could turn into that there's a hate group that comes in that wants to have a sign, and then we can't, so then it turns into what's the consistency of pick and choosing? And if it is a First Amendment violation and, and you're allowed to bring in signs, and that's the rule, then that's just fine. I just want to make sure that when we're doing this, because I don't want to ever infringe on anybody to look at this as any censorship, that you can't come in and do that, because I think that everybody has the right to do that. I'm just looking at it as that it could turn into something where a hate group decides that they want to come to the meeting. I mean, outside of whatever political party, but that we wouldn't be able to say to them, because then it turns into, well, you're inconsistent, this person could do this, but I can't, and I'm about consistency. So that's the only thing that I would look at, reference to redoing the policy, is what is, other people do about signs? I mean, and obviously, there has to be some kind of case law. I would assume that this is why they can or they can't, and if it is okay, then that's fine, then I'm totally fine with, totally fine with people having signs and bringing them in and using things. There's no issues on that. I, I, because I think people have the right to say what they say, including printing it on a sign. But I just want to make sure that we're consistent with best practices. That's, that's all that I'm, I'm looking for, is so that we, we're on the same level.
I do want to call out one specific thing that may get lost here. In each of these versions, there's a slight change that I think's important, just for managerial, of the, of the process of public speaking, and that is the deadline to submit speaker cards shall be when the board chair calls the meeting to order, which is slightly different. We do it up until public comment starts. Having spoke with Kathy, and we, we have determined that in order to manage this process effectively, that it would be in the best interest of making that the deadline.
That's how it used to be.
Can I ask one more thing about cards? In reference to the cards, what, what is it, obviously because I'm being consistent, what is it in reference to being able to speak? Does it, and I, I don't want to open up Pandora's Box, but can you sign the card? Don't have to sign the card. Do you have to fill it out completely? Do you have to have, you know, I see a variety of everything, and it's for consistency, I want to make sure that we are above, because I understand the acknowledgement is, that you know that it's being, that it's going to be taped, and that you're being viewed, and you're consenting, that that's going to happen based upon our policy. So I guess it's more of a legal. Is there anything that has to be signed for public speaking? Because I don't want to ask people to sign their cards if they don't have to, because it's really, it's just a notice document and not an actual official, official piece, because there have been people that have filled out cards for other people, and then I find there's two cards in there, because somebody doesn't want to, you know, they're on their way, and they fill out a card, and they hand in the card, and then they get here, then that person fills out the card, and then I see two names in there for the same person, same card. So what I'm getting at is, I'm just looking at for some clarification in reference to the cards, and if there's any procedural protocol, if I'm going to be calling out the names, or whoever may be doing that, is there a procedural protocol that they have to be completed in full, or they have to sign, or they have an acknowledgement? Can they come back and then sue us and say, well, I didn't sign the card, you allowed me to speak, and so now I'm being?
Well, a couple, I would want to look into that, to make sure I'm covering every possible example on that before I take a position on it. But that being said, I don't know that there is much expectation of privacy, you know, in a public meeting with a roomful of people, so I don't have any concerns about the recording, either audio or video of people. I think it is at least implied, when you come to a school board meeting with there's TVs where, that you can see, that you're going to be recorded. I would want to look a little bit closer at whether you can require people to sign as a precondition. I'm concerned that that would lead to challenges on things like citizenship, which open up potentially a Pandora's Box of lawsuits about ethnicity and national origin and, you know, citizenship and constitutional issues like that, that I would want to have a better understanding of. So I don't think there is, I think there are some restrictions in, like, the more requirements that you make, the more problematic it could become, but I don't know offhand what exactly where that line is.
Yeah, I just want to make, you know, like, I want to do it, I want to do what's fair for everybody, and I want to make sure that if everybody is signing their cards, that people who don't sign their cards, I just want to make sure liability for the district as well as for them, that, that we're consistent, because I don't want to say, well, then you don't have to sign your card, because then nobody will sign their cards, if you follow me, or you have to put your address on there, but nobody puts their address on there. So it's not necessarily for that, it's just to see if there's actually anything, as, you know, I like to follow the rules, that if there's anything that is specific to that, 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 that will change anything, reference to First Amendment, right, what they're speaking on. But is there anything to it? I would think that there probably isn't, but I just wanted to make sure just if we're doing it right, that's all.
If you're asking me offhand, I don't know of like a statute, for example, or a rule that requires that you sign your name to a piece of paper and agree to conditions. That being said, we might be able to impose those. I would want to look a little bit closer into that. I think it's much more likely that we have. I think it's much more likely that we have the ability to allow people to identify themselves before they get up and speak, really, I think it's probably more important than, you know, whether they sign the form, but I would want to look at that a little closer, frankly.
I just want to add in here that I've been out in the community a good deal in the last several months, almost every day, and I'm getting consistent feedback that, for me, as chair, to look at options with public comment. There's obviously a great variety of perception of what is happening in the boardroom relative to public comment. So, I did ask the superintendent to look across different government organizations and see what practices were out there, and as one board member, and obviously, this is a, something that would include consensus on the, in this workshop, but I would like to look at another venue, and what comes to mind for me, having looked over all of these, is as simple as possible, would be the V3, item B2, in its simplicity, and looking to see if there's any other interest in any options or any discussion thereof. I will respect where my colleagues stand, however, I do want the public to know that I have responded, and have asked for, to look at, again, I want to reinforce, I have asked to have this presented, I've done my due diligence in responding to Sarasota County community, and at this point, it is up to my colleagues, as if they see a benefit, a need, or such. Mrs. Ziegler.
Thank you, well, I appreciate you guys looking at other government entities, local entities, I know that Council of Governments, that was discussed previously, and it makes everyone kind of feel a little bit even keeled, because, you know, I don't think anyone on this board wants to limit public comment for any reasons, because we believe in the value of hearing from people, but we also have, who has had to preside over them, recognize that the consistency is being the biggest challenge, and trying to, at the same time, maintain decorum. I always feel for our staff that's here for a long time, but I know that they get a lot of work done, so I give you guys a thumbs up. The only thing that we haven't tried is this, actually, you know, I will say, just traditionally, in a best practices, I would say, separating the two is a best practice, however, I don't, I think we're in a very odd time, and I think it makes it harder for the presiding officer, being the chair, to dictate, because I can just, as we've discussed before, see someone coming forward, they're talking on agenda item, and then they start talking about something else, and, you know, then, instead of interrupting, you're like, all right, let's just let him go, but then, you have it done again, and then, you want to interrupt that person, and then we're off to the races, and we're no better off. And so, I think, similar to what Mr. Enos said, is, whatever we're doing, just wanting to make sure we're doing it right, or practicing with fidelity, and going to alleviate, you know, maintain our focus, but also allowing for people to be heard. And when Mr. Connor and I were talking about this, when we looked at the frequency, so the last couple of board meetings we've had ranged, I think that, at the peak, it was around, what, 65 or 70 members?
67.
So, at no point, you know, I think it's important, because I don't want it to make it appear that we're trying to limit time, per se, but I think that if you do put a, put a cap on a time limit, and I think it's not unreasonable, I mean, 90 minutes, whatever, 120 minutes, whatever, but then, making it even for each speaker, the amount of time, I think that's consistent with what you'll see elsewhere, and I think it just allows it to be free from a free-for-all, and perhaps allow a little bit more control. You know, I'm fine with V2, V3, I guess, would be saying, I think that bringing forward that time component, my only concern is, when we have situations where there's a cap, we have not done a cap yet, so I'm trying to think, like, what's the unforeseen consequence? And there are people who can't, who may weaponize it, I mean, we have rallies right now, outside of our board chambers, and so, and tends to be, you know, when, I don't know, I have not gone out there and totally seen it, but then you have, you know, a whole wave of speakers at the beginning, that kind of weaponized, to max out that limit, or they just all want to talk, I shouldn't say that should weaponize it, but that precludes some people who didn't realize there are going to be 200 people here, that want to speak on some, one issue, and so, I want to balance that out, I don't know how.
Well, and to that point, there's two main things we need to accomplish every time we have public, we have public comment, is we have to, obviously, satisfy the First Amendment requirements, every time, and regarding things that you vote on, under Chapter 286 of the Florida statutes, people are, we're required to give people a meaningful opportunity to participate on agenda items before you take votes on them. So, I would say, to the extent we're going to bifurcate or set time limits, that, and I think it's just a management issue, is, when, if someone comes in with a complicated thing that's on the agenda, and they need a little more time than the time permits, that we just have some flexibility, a little bit more on the specific agenda items than perhaps the general public comment, to make sure that we afford them that meaningful opportunity to participate before you all vote, so we can have validly passed board actions.
Well, I'm looking for consistency, having sat in the seat of chair, and we're all, we are all human beings, and we all have the right to, our perceptions become our realities, and, you know, thinking that you are being consistent doesn't demand that others perceive it as that. So, my experience as chair, I'm looking for what allows the chair, and balances out with the public having input, that provides the most consistency, to where we feel there's, you know, opportunity and balance.
I guess, like, imagine a scenario where we had 75 people came in, and 70 of them wanted to talk about a general concern, and five of them wanted to talk about a specific agenda item, and then imagine if that agenda item was complicated, or convoluted, or impacted their kid. That might, that one minute might not be enough to accurately convey in a meaningful way what they need to say, because, in essence, I hate to, to your point, and I don't know if weaponizes the word, or drown out, but there's a scenario where someone who needs more than one minute to convey something that matters about an agenda item, or their child, or something like that, that is, you know, about something that you have to take a vote on, that I just would say, you know, we want to have some way to account for that.
Well, don't we always have the ability to make a motion to waive and make an exception, and a second, and a vote? In that particular situation, I think is consistent across any policy that we've adopted, versus building it into one policy. I, again, consistency, and who's making those judgments on any one agenda item, I think that, you know, that that ability in Robert's rules always exists, if it's, if I recall correctly, to waive a, a current policy requires a supermajority, which would be four out of the five board members. Mr. Edwards, please.
Thank you. I waited until a whole lot of discussion from my colleagues could ensue. I look at this from an entirely different perspective, and I'm mostly concerned about public comments that are relating to the business of the board. And why it's awkward for me is that this board came in and undid a, of the policy that was in place, which I thought was the best policy, which would allow for three minutes for however many speakers to speak to us about agenda items and the business of the board. And where that came from, from my perspective, is that after I've sat in board meetings for hours and hours of public comment that had nothing to do with the business of the board, I was exhausted, and I didn't feel that I was at my best to make final decisions on votes that are imperative to our students, and our teachers, and our district. So, if I, I would not be supportive of the 90-minute rule, because I don't want to limit public comments, and I felt that the policy worked beautifully when people had other comments, other than what's on the agenda, and they were given time periods at the end of the meeting to give their political and/or feedback, or whatever they needed to express to us as board members, preferably feedback, I like it in the form of feedback, because I can get good ideas and get good suggestions if it's in the form of feedback, and that's where I would say is the best practice, in my opinion, is that I need to hear, I come to almost every meeting with how I'm going to vote, but sometimes, I've had my decision changed, because someone gave, brought up a good question, or brought up a presentation about a business item, when I'm fresh, when I'm getting ready to make a decision, and I don't want it to be, in my personal opinion, convoluted into 90 minutes of public comments. I'd rather hear all that stuff up front, and then save the public comment for the end of the meeting. That's my personal opinion.
So, at this point, Mrs. Ziegler has put an interest in B2 or B3, I have an interest in B2, and Mr. Edwards is looking for the split, B4. Mr. Enos, or Ms. Marinelli, do you have any input?
Well, I like simple, and I'm looking at the other things, and, you know, if it's this many, we got that, just, I'm leaning towards V3, that we have the 90 minutes, because I've always been told by all my teachers, all my professors, everybody in adult life, if you can't say what needs to be said in one or two minutes, it's too long.
Are you saying, excuse me, Ms. Marinelli, V or B, which one are you...
B, V.
V, okay.
Three, and B2.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment speaking time shall be 90 minutes total, and the time is evenly distributed by the, how many people we have signed up. Because I can say, I was not on the board when the policy was changed, but I certainly listened to the board meetings, and they were not consistent, some people went off on their tangents, and I remember Chairperson Goodwin having to, you know, bring it back, bring it back, bring it back, and that's disruptive in itself, so, excuse me, I'm just saying, I was viewing it as a citizen viewing public comments, and that's what I viewed, I'm not finished yet, please, thank you. So, for me, I like it simple, I like the 90 minutes, and there's always times when, especially if a parent comes up and has a concern, it's always the board chair to look at the superintendent, to ask him to have somebody speak with that specific concern. So, I think we have, you know, we have the flexibility, but no matter what we've been trying, it's not working. So, I am, I am for the B2 under V3.
Mr. Enos.
Have you looked into any of the other districts and what they're doing, or has there just looked into the county? I mean, other school districts, I mean, in Broward, here's one of my questions, I would say, so, a lot of these things is to speak on the agenda items, which I think is ultimately valuable. If the county, so, as an example, we have consent agenda, we have all those items, they're saying, under each agenda item, so would we have to then go to no consent, you say, so would that be specifically broken up, and I know the answer, but I'm kind of doing it for the public, too, so, that, and then, secondly, is, what does district similar in our size, how do they handle, how do they handle public comment?
So, to answer the first part of that question, first, the way that some government entities do it, and even the Florida Department of Education does it, is, they allow, as the consent agenda comes up to be voted on, they have comment cards where somebody would fill out, and they would note that they want to speak on the consent agenda, they would be called up to speak, they'd have their period of time to speak, and then, the board would take a vote, then they'd call up Agenda Item 16, or whatever is next, on their new business, and they would have on those speaker cards, everybody wishing to speak on Agenda Item 16, you now have X amount of time to speak on that agenda item, then the board takes a vote, then they have the next agenda item as it goes, until they're through their agenda and all of their votes.
And that's three minutes per person, and that person then can fill out comment cards for each, so we'd have one for consent, which would be a bulk, and then we'd have one for each new business item, which would be a bulk, which would then, and then, what do they do, reference to general comments, or do they not have general comments, unless they do another three minutes at the end?
They would do, some of them do a different period of time, where if they're up to three minutes, depending on how many speakers they have, they may limit it to fewer than three minutes, one minute, two minutes, and then, yes, they would have a general comments period at the end of their meeting, and I can tell you that the Florida Department of Education does quite regularly see people turning in comment cards and speaking on multiple, if not all, of their agenda items before they vote.
And what about similar districts in size, Lee, Collier, or Orange, Broward, not Broward, but you know what I'm saying, Earl's Borough?
There are districts across the state that do it in a variety of ways, some that do do it with the two periods of public comment, some that have it where it's up to three minutes, depending on the number of speakers, some that have a set period of time, and some that have what we currently have, where it's just three minutes of comment on the agenda or the general business of the board.
So, there's no real commonality in how they're doing it, so they're kind of all of, they're either, they're any of these four policies, based on the district?
It seems like, from the research that I've done, and looking into it with the superintendent, that those are the four that are done at the district level, not so much the, as you call an agenda item, bring up public comment for each different agenda item as they go, more of a period of comment on the agenda in totality than each item.
Mr. Edwards, please.
Yeah, I just want to say that, and I appreciate that Mrs. Marinelli and I might have different perceptions, but in terms of best practices, which I see that the chair and the vice chair picked up on one, that Mrs. Goodwin and I had as chair and vice chair, and so, in terms of trying, and I appreciate the overwhelming responsibility of large public comments for the chair, and so, the way that it got divided up between Mrs. Goodwin and I, was that if someone were speaking off of an agenda item prior to, it was my responsibility to correct that person and stop that person, not Mrs. Goodwin's, because she was paying attention to the decorum of the room, she was paying attention to what was going on behind, and if someone were, and trying to do both is difficult, very difficult, having sat in that seat. So, that it's consistent to be able to, because I know we get into problems of consistency, and it was the vice chair's responsibility to just say, I'm sorry, you're off agenda, or we're on agenda, and sometimes would have to move someone, that happened, but it was a system that ran very, very well, there was not inconsistencies, and when Mrs. Goodwin had to call things, it was prior to the change. And you all did have a chance to vote on public policy, you changed it when you got here, you all changed it and ran in your elections to say that you were going to restore public comments, so it did get changed, and there was a vote, so I don't want the narrative to change, it's okay, we're changing it again, but I'm only trying to tell you that, from my perspective, I don't want to limit the public, and I want to be fresh and focus on agenda items.
When you say "you all," I did not run in an election and have a platform that you're referencing, so "you all" requires a little bit more clarification, as well as the perception is not necessarily mine, that I can lend to the community as a whole, perception is in the eyes of each individual, and as I had stated, in, for me, as a board member, becomes their reality, and I respect the whole variety of those. So, I am interested, and remain interested, in something we haven't tried, which is the B as in Boy, too, and I know... I know, it is the V as in Victor, and B as in boy, too. The third.
I think, if you can just provide the version, I think that'll get clarity. Don't worry about the Bs, because that's just within.
The Vs and the Bs.
Just version one, two, three, or four.
It's version three. And there were three board members interested in that. If that is the case, I would like to move forward. If it isn't, please share that if we don't have enough of an interest in, and that I also respect. Ms. Ziegler, please.
I just, a couple of things. I, I think, I know, because I don't disagree with, it's a long meeting and then having to take action. So the 90 minutes, I just want to make sure it's not too limiting. But the same token, when you broke it down, Mr. Connor looked at the past meetings and then calculated, okay, so what would that be? Because I don't want to get to the point where it's like 30 seconds. It's very difficult. And I've been at the Department of Educ, committee meetings up there, when you, they'll adjust the timeframe. And all of a sudden, some are prepared for three minutes or one, whatever it is. And then it gets down to like 30 seconds, and you're really barely getting yourself together. So I want to be reasonable to that. So I don't know if 90 minutes, or I just don't know what our pass has been, 90 minutes or 120. But going into the other, other part of, you know, putting a cap on it so that it's not three and a half hours, so that we, when we, because there is the action to be taken, and we have to have some cognitive ability by that point. And sometimes it's difficult. And so hedging that way. And to be honest, we've tried a lot of different things. And I, again, will say, I think the separating is a best practice. Unfortunately, I just don't know that we're yet, we're not quite yet there. And, and so it ends up being more of a deterrent. But if, if that, if we look back at the past couple meetings, and, and make sure we give the public a fair amount of warning, or et cetera, to understand that that will be changed. Because I think that's the hardest part, is when people aren't prepared. Just like when you mentioned, which I'm completely fine with, the change of the, when we cut off public comment cards, making sure we have something in the lobby that lets them know that. Because again, it's, I think it's, whatever we choose, doing it consistently is going to be hugely beneficial. And making sure that they are prepared for that, so that it's not a gotcha. And no one, I don't, no one's trying to do a gotcha. I think it's just, we want to have a reasonable timeframe. So if we were to look back, if 90 or is 120 minutes, I'm not sure. I just want to be reasonable where if, if we took the average, I mean, the last couple meetings have been pretty long. If we took the average amount, and it, you broke it down, I mean, how much time would each person get? Or about a minute realistically? So do we need to up? That's my only concern. I just don't.
Average was probably, Mr. Enos was probably 50.
Well, we had, the low, I think, was 39. We had 55, 77. So it was kind of depending upon, also a three o'clock meeting was our lowest. Our six o'clock meeting is our highest. I mean, as a board member, just to say, you know, I'm not prepared in order to make a recommendation either which way today. I still want to know about the signs, I want to know about the cards. I also want to be able to go and make some contacts, to be able to see what the other districts are doing in reference to that. I do believe, though, that, you know, just as particular for me, is that one of the things that I want to make sure that, you know, I have protected our First Amendment right forever. And I know that people allowed to have an opportunity to say what they need to say. So if it's to have the beginning for the agenda item, so we're fresh, and then move it to the back, I did run on that I wanted to put the three minutes back at the very beginning, because I thought that that was, as to what my constituents were saying, is they believe that that's what they wanted at this point. I'm still in favor of that. I don't want it to get to, let's say, we did 120 minutes, but we had an issue of something of, of, of serious gravity of nature, or something that was really significant. And then a one minute may not be, or we have 120. Because we've had, we've had the board meetings at the very beginning, that we had a lot of comment cards. And I totally agree with everybody for staff and being fresh to be able to look at that. Because I want the most, most of the input. So I would want to look at, to see exactly all of those pieces to do it right. Because at one point, I'll just say, at one point, the, the, the policy to the cards, and I brought it up at the time to the board, the policy to the cards did not match.
Right.
And I said, we're not matching this, so we can't be consistent, because it doesn't match. And then we changed the cards, because there was a whole, this, this, about taping inside of the, you know, taping actually, as the people taping the meetings. And anyway, long story short, is there's a lot, we figured a lot of that out. I would just want to make sure that before I do this, because it is very, very significant. Because I would just want to make sure that the right decision is, is for this person is, is being made, is that I, you know, I don't like sitting for five hours. I think that's about our biggest, longest one was five plus. I understand that. But I also want to make sure that I do the research, too, to make sure that, and it's not a lack of preparedness on my side, because I've read everything, and I looked at everything. But I had some questions and notes that I had taken down, just as in the signage, just as in the comment cards, as I'm getting them and I'm reading them. As Justin getting to is, is ultimately, how does the other municipalities do it? Like, I think in Northport, they're not allowed to clap. If they're clapped, they get to be removed. So I just want to, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, we're doing the best for what our community is looking for. And, and I would want, before I even said which way to move towards, is I want those other clarifications, and maybe to even to see some of the policies of, like a Hillsborough, I mean, Mr. Connor, you worked there, and seeing how, or what has been the most effective in there. Because I know that I did, I did something for Broward County, and that they're totally different than anything that we do, is that they just come up and they speak the agenda items. They, and, and made some recommendations in that case, too. So that's kind of, because this is such an important piece, is I would want to, to just make sure that I have all of the details in, in before we were to do that. Because I think limiting stuff is, is, is not a good thing for me.
Madam Chair, may I ask, because I know from a timeframe standpoint, and again, whatever we end up doing, I just think we have to just prepare the community for it. But I think we're on the same page as my concern with limiting. But I definitely want to find out about the signage piece, that whatever change, we're going in one direction, it's not coming back for multiple workshops like in the past.
Well, we're looking at to fulfill the timeline of policy changes would be a month, you know, a board meeting to advertise, a board meeting to approve. So you're looking at ample opportunity to get information out to the community in a variety of, you know, required ways. I'm not sure where everyone is right now. It looks like you want to talk.
Well, I just, I want it clear that in no way do I want to restrict anybody's freedom of speech. That, that is a given. I have always prided myself in listening to people and taking what they have to say. But, and I agree with what Mr. Edwards says, what Mrs. Ziegler said, what you've said, what you've said. But I think, number one, we have to be consistent. Because I think we all agree, we haven't been consistent, from what the cards say. And I know we have to follow legalities and everything, but I want to be consistent. I want to give everybody a chance to speak. But there's been so much extra that has gotten in the way. So how do we run a productive meeting? Because I know people in the community, regardless of their political views, they want to see a board that works well, and they want what's going on in the boardrooms to stop, and focus on education and the needs of our students and our staff. And for whatever, however we get there, because obviously, nothing is working 100% to get to that point, to get to the business. So we all agree that we need to get to the business. So how do we get there? And if it's 90 minutes or 120 minutes, that's the flexibility. And I agree, we've got to let the public know. And I know we're going to get a lot of feedback on this. And I'm not looking to limit, I just want to have the most productive board meetings that we can, and get the business of our students and our staff done.
Well, we're a $1.5 billion roughly organization that's focused in on academia, academic achievement, and serving our community, educating our students, partnering with our families, and every entity that we have partnerships with. And I think that the board chamber is, you know, we've had the national media here, we've had the national media summoned. There's a variety of things that have gone on that. And I also look to the dedicated staff that exist here. And we have an incredibly dedicated staff that, that stay for the duration to lend their expertise in any fashion needed to the boardroom. And they've got to be back up and in full gear the very next morning. There's a little bit more flexibility in a board member's agenda or scheduling, but our actual staff are reporting back early the next morning. And what are our priorities? And I can assure you that the folks that I've worked with in a variety of roles in this district, that I, I want to hear what you have to say. And I fully want to understand, and it's important. At the same time, where is, where can we provide the consistency? What are our, the priorities of, of this business? And there is perception, I, I've had enormous, as the chair, onus put on me of a variety of different things. I'm, I'm at the point where what we do isn't written in stone. As a board, we have the opportunity to try things. I don't believe that what we're doing right now is in the best interest of reading achievement, of partnerships. I mean, do our partners want to come in and be part of what's going on in this chamber? And I'll use the words of Jane Goodwin, and yes, I do agree with her on that point. Who wants to come in and be part of what has been occurring? So I'm at the point, as chair, where I asked for this, based on tremendous community input, on me to do something different. And it does boil down to consistency. And I don't know that, that consistency can be provided by one person better than another person. I think that it, because again, perception is in the eyes of the beholder. And perception is their reality, and that's to be respected. So, and, and I'm perfectly fine with my colleagues not agreeing with me, and will respect that. I am under the onus that I'm expected to present something different. We're looking at that right now, being a month from now. Regardless of any consensus that occurs, it's going to take a month to implement it, from advertising the, the agendas that are required, and the board meetings that are required to do it. Please.
And I will say that, based on the feedback today and the comments from the board, we will need to take a look at some of these things and see what other districts are doing, so we can provide clarification on the signs, on the First Amendment and the legalities and any case law that exists. So it could be longer than a month. It could be six weeks. This could have some need that we do have to bring it back to another workshop, just to try to get that, that consensus from everybody, and, and provide those questions in the open forum like this, before we just put it on an agenda to advertise.
And I agree with you. We're also looking at two months from now, not six weeks, because we won't have another workshop. So, and, and I'm not disagreeing with you or any of the input of my colleagues. I'm clarifying for the public that has been asking me consistently for change, that it, nothing happens in government with our transparency in two weeks. But we won't have another workshop for months for public purposes. So we are looking essentially at two months, unless we call it a special meeting.
I just, I wanted to raise one thing. And I'm not endorsing this, by the way. I just know it was raised. And when we get to time limits, this does cause concern. So there was, I, I think it would be very difficult. It was suggested, and I think one of the municipalities does this, where they verify your, if you're a county resident. I think there's a lot of interest in that. I can understand the value of that. But I also recognize, we also serve Manatee County students and families, among other, variety of other areas that I think that would be very challenging to police, for lack of a better term. And I certainly don't want to step in something there for, for whatever reason. So, but I know it's been brought up by public, so I wanted to raise that. Because the same token, we do have a lot of people coming from different organizations and from different, wherever. Maybe they're from here or not. But, and so there's the perception that we have a lot of people coming in from outside. And so when you have that limit on time, we, there is, and this is just putting this out there for thought, because I'm all about trying to find a solution here. I, trust me, I feel your pain. But I also just, I want to think about that being an issue of concern, is that, and let's, that could be a continuation for the foreseeable future. I, well, and I, and I don't want that to hinder members of our community if they're then limited because of that. That's, I just, there's a, there's a downside of that. That's the only part I'm a little concerned about. I don't know that there's a solution to it. I, I, that's why I do like the cards. I certainly am never going to be supportive of someone like, what's your address? Because I saw that tactic been done before. I think that whatever's on the card, we need to make sure it's noted that that is subject to public record. I think we talked about that before. So when we finally change this, so that they're, they're aware of that. Because we did have somebody do a public records request for all of our comment cards recently. So, for whatever reason. But if you just kind of imagine that, making sure members of the public know. And I just want to kind of digest that piece of it, because I don't anticipate, I could foresee the continuation. I mean, like I said, there have been rallies literally outside the chambers. And so I don't want to hinder our members of our public, if we have people from outside coming in, which I don't see us changing that, and I'm not suggesting we do. But I don't want a time limit to hurt our local community members for that reason. That's why I'm a little bit hesitant.
Hesitant. Can you be more specific? I'm trying.
Hesitant on a, on a time cap, on a time limit. That's my only concern, just I don't want to.
Based on other organizations?
Well, if I were, I don't want to limit our residents the opportunity to come speak. If we are having more and more people come from outside the area to speak, which they're welcome to, that that continues, and we are putting a limit, we're limiting more likely our local citizens.
Well, I, I think that we, we are now trying to find the answers to a board meeting in a boardroom that's highly organized of organizations, that many are perceiving as a political nature. So I'm going to continually, as chair, take us back to being an organization that is about academic achievement, our families, our students, taking care of our staff. I can tell you that that's my, I'm speaking for myself only, that's always been my priority. That brings the highest quality to our schools, making accommodations for organizations coming in from the Tampa Bay area that are, have a political inclination. I am going to be very transparent. It is not my priority. And, and, and stick to that. So it sounds, Mr. Edwards?
Yes. So I think everyone knows where I stand on this. But I just want to point out that the termination of a superintendent, Vermillion, getting rid of a character strong, redistricting, those were all agenda items. The current of, I think you referred to as what's going on here, is a distraction that has been going on for a couple of months. And all I'm really trying to do, and by the way, I agree, not all of those things are academically focused, or, and they, yet again, because they were agenda items that the board put forward, that gets a public response. So all I'm trying to do is not get into, and I don't want the public to be shamed for their public comments either. That's not, it's not their fault. They're coming in and expressing their views. So I, I, I want to get back to, if you just look at that agenda, or those things that I brought up, that were some agenda, some distraction, that we've been dealing with for the past year, and put that into context of how it should ensue for the year, and put that into context of how it should ensue for the best interest of the business of the board.
So let's look at, I don't see anyone else making a comment, where we stand right now. So, Mr. Edwards, just so that we can consolidate where we are. Where do you, you have any recommendations right now with what you'd like to see happen next?
I think the policy, whichever version it is, where there's the agenda items up front and the general comments in the back. I think to Mr. Enos's point, if we had it structured last, you know, before, where it was three minutes for agenda items and two minutes for general, if you want to restore it and make it three and three, I think that's where I would stand.
And you, and, okay. Mrs. Sigler.
I'm willing to try, honestly, at this point, I don't, I don't have, I don't have an answer. I don't want, I'm very sensitive about limiting public comment, but I also believe that a lot of things have been attempted, and I share your response, very much so, by the way, that bringing that in and prioritizing what we're here to do is important. I also would say that for over multiple years, I never, I'm not, what did you, how did you say? I don't know what the word you used, but, you know, I don't want to criticize public comment. I'm not criticizing public comment. And I think over, for years, we've had people who, all different walks of life, that are genuinely coming in because they're genuinely concerned. Whether I agree with them or not doesn't make their concerns any less or more. And I share that across the board. I feel that, again, we pick and choose when it's an important thing or not. I think it's all important. And that's why I want to be thoughtful about the timeframe. I want to hear, I am, I think, kind of, I want, I do want to know about those signs. I, I'm not totally opposed to a max time. I'm still digesting that. I would probably be leaning more towards that, because I think that might be more manageable based on my experience. And my goal in the future would be to get where it's separated, but I just don't think we're there yet, so. But I just need to chew on the timeframe a little bit more.
And Mr. Enos.
Again, you know, with the answers, I would almost say, you know, if it's a kind of a hybrid model, if I was to look at it today, it would almost be to do, if we're looking at the business of the board in reference to the staff, the staff being here to that extent, almost being is that you would do the, you know, you would have, I think that most of them are showing that they're going to allow you to speak on the agenda items and then general comments at the end. I think that's pretty much the consistency with the rest of the other city and county governments. It's almost would be that, at that point, then maybe Mr. Connor would be able to release their staff after the time of the agendas, and then it comes back to the general. I just, again, I, to divide the time up is just, you know, at the end of the day, I just think that, you know, whatever, whatever we do, I agree 100% with you, Ms. Rose, we have to be able to have it so that most people want to have us get to the board business so they can see the meeting, get to the board business, be ready, have those votes, and then be able to move on from there. So I would still would say that, you know, I'd still would want, before we did anything about the signs, because I think that is really something that's significant. And the cards, I understand, maybe we could put signage up that says that, just understanding, and, you know, blah, blah, you know, something to a disclaimer like they put for trespass, some kind of a sign that says, based on our policy, just realize, you know, the completion of the cards, et cetera, et cetera. But I would almost be like, even if there was some hybrid, that we do the three and the two, or do, or do something where I think the general public wants us to get to the business of the board. And then the rest of it is, is to what it is, if I was have to pick. But I, I don't know if I can say, okay, well, you know, what's the difference between 60 minutes, 90 minutes, 120, 150, you know? I just, I don't know if I'm there to that point. I just know that I agree 100%. We have to do something in reference to the management and consist, to the consistency, you know, we have to do something in reference to consistency of what it is. And if that is to keep it, it's three and three, three and two, whatever it is, to be able to go, hey, these are the agenda items. Because I could tell you that out of all the comment cards I see, there's probably a half a dozen or so that are speaking to an agenda item specifically that mentioned on their card, and that the rest is general comments. So I'm kind of really torn on it, because I understand what we're wanting to do, because I hear the same things, is what's going on in these meetings? We have to take control of these meetings, and it's turning to, to, and, you know, and I've seen it, I've seen it for both sides. I've seen it on both sides. So it's kind of like, what can we do? But once we implement it, I don't want to have to come back and change it again, just to say, oh, well, we found out this, and let's come back, and let's do another third day. So that's, I don't know if I made any sense. I'd spoken circles, but can I just say I agree with everybody, and then we can just move on?
Well, for me, it's actually not hard. It really isn't. I've been in this public service for quite a while, and there's nothing more important than the student. And everything networks out from that. And at this point, the subject matter in our boardroom is about the intimacies of a board member's life and otherwise. And I like this board member, or I don't like that one, fine, go to the polls. I'm pretty much at the point where we have an organization that is doing stellar things right now with academic achievement, and I support that all the way. And I want to hear, every forum of public comment, email me, everything else that you need to do. But my agenda is student achievement, and that's not going to change. And the signs aren't going to change that for me either. I'm looking at two months down the road, and I want the public to know that I've listened to you, I've put it forth, and this is the consensus of my colleagues of where we go. Ms. Marinelli, you're last.
Well, it just shows you how difficult this whole topic is, because we all come from same places, but different places. I just know, I can remember Chairperson Goodwin saying, and she was pretty frustrated, because watching as a citizen, and her saying, this is not working. Let's just try this, and if it doesn't work, we'll, we'll come back. And I think that is okay, because not everything that we think is going to work is going to work. Because look how the rhetoric in our, the board meetings, it gets wrapped up each, each time. And I do want to hear from the public. But I do think we have to, we have to get some control and get back to what the board's business is. And if it means that we look at, if it's the 90 minutes, or if it's 120 minutes, whatever, we have 90 minutes that was presented to us. Yes, I do want to know about the signs. I am a very efficient person. It drives me crazy when we can't even always agree, and people, you know, you go this way and that way. We need to have our board meetings be efficient, because it is about the student, and it is about our staff, and our community, and our parents. And we're, we're getting off of that topic. So, two months, I respect if we need to get some more input. But we're going to be at this same place in two months. So I would hope, after people get their input, that we can make a decision. And make it, and as Mrs. Goodwin said, let's just try it. And if it doesn't work, we'll go back to the drawing board. But hopefully, we can all get to a place that we can agree, because we also set the tone. And if people see the disagreements, for whatever reason, that sets a tone of what happens and what comes in the board meeting. So that doesn't mean we all have to agree, but there are ways to disagree respectfully, and there are ways to agree respectively. But we set the tone.
There, there's not, there's no perfect solution when you've got the agendas that are happening in politics and otherwise in today's world across the country, just not here in Sarasota. But I'm compelled to listen and try new things. Superintendent Connor, do you have any thing that you would recommend at this point in a timeline or such, or your staff as we go forward, listening to us as board members?
I'm not sure that I do, but I hear version four, and I hear version three. And I hear there's some, some are very adamant about three, some are very adamant about four, and then we have a couple that are on the verge of three or four. Is there any appetite for us to look at a hybrid version of that, or take it back and massage some of the, some of the input that we've, we've had here, or?
What about if we do, again, if we do the agenda items at three minutes apiece, and then we do 90 minutes of public comment at the end? So that, that's just general comments, and that we have it so that it, it's to Mr., so at 40 cards, that's 80 minutes. At 80 cards, that's 160 minutes. And do something of that, where that then, that, that would be, to me, is some kind of a hybrid. But I'm not sure if anyone has the appetite for doing something like that.
I, I'm gonna, really, the question would be for the chair. This is not, I know this obviously can live in perpetuity, but I do think it makes a difference on what person's comfortable with. I will tell you candidly, I just felt like, all right, just go, go for it, because I don't know that there's a silver bullet. So as you all know, I let it roll through, and that was, that was it. At the same time, if it comes down to breaking it up, and you feel like you can, I mean, I've heard you, you can see the teacher in you. As far as, you know, redirecting and making it kind of putting, breaking it down where it's agenda items, because I think that's important. There's a part of me I don't want to limit particularly when it has an item that we have to, we have to take action on. I think it's very, it's very important. I think it's very clearly stated that that is a requirement, reasonable, it doesn't say how long. But if we were to go to four, I mean, how comfortable are you with a redirect of keeping people on agenda items? Because that, to me, that's the deal breaker.
It doesn't, perception is in the eyes of the beholder. There's, in my opinion, in many opinions coming to me publicly, perceptions lend themselves to political affiliations. We're an extraordinarily unique place. My unique place is with students and academic achievement. That's my challenge right now, mine, speaking for me. I feel that change is needed, that the boardroom agenda is off task. I feel compelled that I'm responsible for that as chair. I don't think that I can please folks that come in here, or the, or the general community where it stands right now, because it's, it's come down to where I thank one person by name and not another, and there's no consistency. I'm at the point where I want to get back to the business of the board. I want to simplify things. If we want to look at signs, let's look at signs next month or the month after that. Right now, the business of the board is the last on the agenda here, and that is not acceptable to me. And if that consensus doesn't exist, it doesn't, and I respect that. But I'm making my point clear to the community that I've listened to. I'm in the business of academia. I'm in the business of serving every student in this district, and we are moving academically. And this board, and justifiably so, is focused in on the First Amendment, and I respect that and have for my entire career. Tell me what you think, tell me everything you want to say. Right now, my focus is the business of the board. And if we're not there, we're not there, but I want to make it clear where I am.
For that, I'm fine, because I'm fine with trying something else. To me, honestly, I will do three works for me. I mean, I think, I think that if we're giving everyone equal time, that to me is very important. I think it would be hard to dictate, and that way, we're not making the decisions at 10:30 at night after a long day. And I'm, and we can, I think that's very important. You can suspend the rules of, by motion, obviously, by affirmative majority vote. May I double check if it's a super majority?
I think it's super majority, you want it to change.
So, yeah, so if you wanted to suspend the rules, so if there was something that day that's on the agenda, then we know we need to address, and we don't think that we can sufficiently do so, to be fair to our members of the public, within a 90-minute time, I think that we would entertain that at that time. And so that, that would be what my suggestion would be. So I will agree to that.
Thank you. I am pushing it, and I'm very clear with it. To me, the signs aren't getting in, in the way of the business of the board, and we can address those at any point. What is getting in the way is a lot of agendas, a lot of lack of perception of consistency. And for me, I want to be talking about academic achievement. I want input on the budget of what we're doing with resources. I want to hear from our partners. I want to hear from things that are going to move the quality of this district. And the public comment seems to be an organized repeat, and that's fine, and that's people's right, and I respect that. But I also have some accountability as chair to what the business of this board is addressing and what we expect out of our staff. Ms. Marinelli.
And I can live with that. And I also think, as an example, if something comes up on the agenda, like charter schools, that affects everybody. People need to be able to give us their feedback, whether pro or con, whatever. There are many items. So if we have that flexibility to say, you know, this is, and we take that super majority vote, I'm okay with that. But I, I agree with, with the three, the three.
So at this point, we have a consensus, enough of a consensus to move forward and look at, get feedback on signs in the future. I want to move this forward, try something new that lends itself to our students. And I'm hard fast on that. And it seems like we have arrived there. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add before we go to individual board member comments?
I just want to say that I can't imagine any one of us going through the hard work of running to sit here and be part of a board and not be student-focused, and not be 100% here for the kids. So what we have now amongst us is just a difference of opinion of how to deal with public comments. I personally think, when you take something like redistricting, which had nothing to do with academic achievement, and it got three or two hours of public comment, and now it's going to be reduced to a 90-minute, or one minute per, I just, I'm not comfortable with that. I will not be supporting it. And I remain firm that I'm here for student achievement.
Thank you.
Well, that's one thing we all agree on. Great.
It's a good thing to agree on. So Superintendent Connor, please.
And I'll wait until this conversation's over. But I do want to give an update around the settlement agreement and the effect on policies as well before, since we have Mr. Pinto and Mr. Dugan here. But I'll wait until after this conversation is done.
I think that we have arrived with something to try and move forward with. And I want to reiterate, try. That's what a board is here for, and representation across the county with our constituents, with a focus on the business of the board. And again, we all know there's, there's no perfection, but try is the key word. So I want to, unless you have something else, Superintendent Connor, move to final comments of board members?
Yeah, just wanted to give a few updates around. So over the spring break, we know that there was a settlement, settlement agreement related to HB 1557 and the implementation thereof. And I did have Mr. Pinto, Mr. Dugan, did take a look at all of our policies to make sure that we are in compliance. Fortunately, we have been through a significant amount of revisions in terms of our policies and have gone through this entire first six months, or since July, we have gone through all of our policies and made sure that they are aligned to statute. But did you want to give a brief update of what you were able to determine as of yesterday's review?
I can't. Thank you, Superintendent. I do want to point out that, as the superintendent said, yes, we have gone through a lot of policies. We have looked at these very closely. And throughout this entire process, you all got to see today kind of how that review process and revision process has gone. We've, we've done this throughout the district with different stakeholders that are impacted by all of these different policies that we have, and with Mr. Dugan in these meetings with us, so that we can look at what we have, we can look at what the state says we have to do, or the Department of Education says we have to do, and make sure that we're aligned with what the laws say that we need to do, not any individual's interpretation of the law. We're getting that feedback from everybody to make sure that we're all reading. We're getting that feedback from everybody, to make sure that we're all reading it the same way, so that we can make sure that our policies do what is needed, to make sure that we have a safe and secure learning and working environment for students and for parents within the district. And I do feel like that we've done a great job of aligning these policies with the, the standards and the statutes, to make sure that they are in a good place. And as we've gone through these, over spring break, and, and since we got back, we have found that a lot of the policies that we've revised, and we haven't had time to get through all of them yet, there, there is a lot there, but that the language that we have put into place, and that the board has approved, is all consistent with what came out of that settlement between the Department of Education and the, the plaintiff in that case. So, we feel that we are in a good spot with a, a variety of the policies, but we are going to make sure that we go through everything, to make sure that all of them are, and we don't miss anything through this process.
I'd like to thank the superintendent for putting out that guidance first thing at 8 o'clock on Monday morning, after a settlement of that magnitude. And what, where I, I think we need additional work, and I'll just give this as feedback, is that the conversations that I've heard from both teachers and students, is that there's been a reluctance to have a lot of conversations, a lot of classroom conversations, because teachers didn't want to feel that they were going to be liable, and students didn't want to feel like they were putting their teachers in uncomfortable or awkward positions. So, I, I think there, there still needs to be more work to our policies, to, to free some of that up, and to reduce some of the anxiety. But I, I also like the fact that both sides of that settlement agreement said they won, which gives me great comfort that we probably, they probably got it right.
Okay, we're looking at 10 minutes left, so we're going to move to final comments, and if I could ask each board member to take a couple minutes, if you have something that you would like to share. Mr. Edwards?
Along the lines of what we just talked about, it with the settlement agreement and the revision of those policies, I know that I've asked for this before, about, to take a look at our legal expense. I don't know that we have to go into the kind of magnitude to find out if we need in-house counsel or out-house counsel, but just look at the amount of dollars that we spent to comply to HB parental rights. We spent a lot of time to do that, and now we're going to be spending a lot of legal dollars to undo it. And I think that, I've, I've spoken to folks around the state, and I just think we can put out an RFP to, that merely make sure that we're getting the best rates possible. And we see that these are the kinds of things that legislature is going to continue to do with, to us, that we are going to have to rewrite and, and comply to new laws, and I want to make sure we're doing that as cost-effectively as possible.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. I had a similar, we had asked question, I've, I had a couple of people recently ask me this, and I don't know what the answer is. So, there has been an influx of different languages, many students who speak different, coming from different countries, I believe, and the language barriers that are existing. Do we have any track, like, do we keep track of students coming in, different languages that they have? Do we have any sense of, like, immigration status, or anything like that? Do we, do we keep track of that?
Immigration status, no. In terms of doing a language survey, yes. So, we know what languages are coming to us. In terms of status, we don't have that information.
Well, I know that, but I didn't know if there is a way to calculate that, because there is, I mean, I, there's just been a lot of questions with people in the community and what have you, and I've heard both from staff and, well, I guess, members of the community in general, about a concern about being able to respond to the, the language barriers, but also it kind of becoming more of a burden than usual. I don't know if that is, if it's, are we, are we seeing more than usual, or is that just the perception? Is there a way to evaluate that? Without?
Without giving any inaccurate information now, I'll definitely take that back.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Enos?
I just want to thank the superintendent, and obviously, everybody who presented today, I thought it was a very productive meeting, again, as, you know, I think that the policies, I think that's something that's needed to be done, and Mr. Pinto and Mr. Dugan, I really appreciate that, as well as, you know, Mr. Connor directing all of that, as well as staff. I mean, you can see the competency, you know, you just look at Ms. Peterson, and when she comes forward and talks about, I just think it's a, it's a reflection upon where the district is headed, and I am, like I said, I am thankful for, for that opportunity to be a part of this, because I know that we're going in the right direction all the way around. So, just appreciate all the hard work that everybody does on a daily basis.
Ms. Marinelli?
And I'd like to say that, too, and when I was working, I would say it very publicly, that I would put any board of directors up to our staff, when we'd meet at cabinet meetings or whatever. The amount of intelligence, hard work, getting things done, and the way it's done, they're top-notch, and I'd put them up to any board of any business, because the intellectual piece is just incredible, and, and I, I feel very privileged to work, when I was working for the district, and working with the same people, and the new people, as a board member, I, I'm very proud of the work that everybody does. It, it shows, and, thank you.
And Superintendent Connor, it's my understanding at this point that we have enough of a consensus to move forward with a policy proposal. We will revisit signs at some point, and any other things that were researched, is that correct? And, and I also will ask, prior to any organizational changes or service changes, that you seek an agenda item or consensus in one-on-ones, to proceed that we are operating as a board in, as we just did with policy. Something that you would like to add before we close?
No, thank you for your engagement today. I think you've given us enough direction to move forward with these items.
Thank you very much. Thank you to our staff, thank you all, it's a good day. Yes.
3 o'clock.
We will resume for our regularly scheduled board meeting at 3 o'clock today, and we are adjourned from our monthly work session. Thank you all.